Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting of the Common Council to order and I ask for a roll call please.
Mayor Gates.
Excused.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Press.
Here.
Councilmember Wayne.
Here.
Councilmember Scotty.
Present.
Councilmember Roy.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Good morning.
Thank you, could we stand please and give a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This is a work session meeting of the Common Council, all work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the City Council with the opportunity for an in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on the agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Manager Baker, I think that this will be a time when I just turn it over to you for the budget discussion.
That's correct, thank you Vice Mayor Miles, members of council, good morning. And welcome to day two of the review of the fiscal eighteen nineteen recommended budget. We're going to continue going through the operating budget units today. We'll complete those later this morning and then move into the capital outlay, capital improvement discussions. And at the end of that, we will have completed the review of the recommendations. The first area that we want to look at is engineering. And there on pages ninety-three and ninety-seven of your budget book. The budget for engineering in FY nineteen includes the addition of a summer intern and a GIS technician two position. Part of the theme that I shared with you yesterday of having more robust technology to support and ultimately to provide for city services. I'd just like to make a comment about the use of interns. Obviously, people think of internships as good for the people who have the internship. Frankly, I think they're good for the organization because we learn from them as much as they learn from us. And that's particularly true in areas that Greg's responsible for. The professional contract services decreased by fifty thousand to help offset the additional cost of the GIS tech two. And I've appreciated Greg's leadership on GIS. Some of you who've been here a while or are interested in the subject know that we used to have GIS in our IT shop and decided it would be better if we had actual users driving the technology. And Greg has stepped up to that. The program support increase allows for training opportunities at the Municipal Utilities Commission and Water Sustainability Committee members. Water sustainability, you know, is new, municipal utilities. We didn't find an awful lot of historical information to support the idea that there was training opportunities there. So that's what that's about. The capital outlay items are for equipment like LED safety lights, survey data collection, laptops, pressure gauge. And then the most interesting to Tina, but probably that's the only person, is that a vehicle that was budgeted in fiscal eighteen won't be received until nineteen. So thirty-five thousand dollars that was budgeted in fiscal eighteen gets carried over to nineteen. Essentially, you're saying, yeah, we still approved the vehicle we approved a year ago. And so those are the highlights of Greg's department. And as you can tell, right on two million dollars, two million seven thousand eight ninety-six, including the changes that I've just highlighted. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that members of council or Vice Mayor Miles have. Vicky.
I see that your request for overtime is doubled from last year to this coming year.
Actually, it's staying the same. My estimated use of overtime for this year's budget is half of what was actually budgeted. But we budgeted ten thousand seventeen eighteen and we're requesting ten thousand in eighteen nineteen as well.
Other questions?
Manager Baker, and the key fiscal year objectives, when it says implement design and construct other projects in the capital program.
Yeah.
I just want to make a comment that I look forward to the city working on, maybe not this next fiscal year, but in the coming fiscal years organizational ranking of those projects.
Thank you.
And then on the other, on the next page, page ninety-five, where you mentioned the Water Sustainability Committee.
Right.
I'd like to make a statement that the policy message that the City of Kingman takes down to the Capitol and to the legislature in future years should be approved by the council as recommended by staff and the Water Sustainability Committee. I would hope that's the way it would work.
Okay, I would, I have another chance to talk to Ron about how he does the legislative position process. But in my experience, typically what happens is that in the fall, like October, early November, there's a work session in the council is provided an opportunity to see what the council, or that the staff suggested positions are on not only water, but a number of other things. And then the council adopts that as the position that Ron and his team are in pursuit of the legislature.
I appreciate that there's actually some training money in there for not only the Municipal Utilities Commission, but also for the Water Sustainability Committee. And I would hope that they would be intimately involved in those, whatever we recommend and whatever message we take down to the state. They're supposed to be our think tank on the issue of water, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments about engineering? Jim.
Just a quick question about the intern, how will that be recruited? Is that going to come from universities or?
We're looking probably at NAU as the main source.
As in NAU, correct. Good.
Thank you.
All right, on that same note, are there other opportunities in different departments for internships? I mean, it seems like.
I bet there are. That's one of the, one of the things that I suspect Ron has done in both Utah and Oregon. And so I would expect that you'll see that pop up in other departments as well.
We were talking about yesterday the difficulty in recruiting in some positions.
Right.
It'd be really great to see high school kids included in maybe summer programs, something that, you know, for entry level jobs where we can move them right into these positions. And maybe that's a lifelong employee and it's another kid that doesn't leave Kingman, not come back.
I agree with that. And one of the, one of the things that I tried to identify the conversations between myself and the community college is that there are a lot of jobs in city government that people coming out of high school could do very well and should be interested in, they just don't know about them. And so internships are one of the ways to do that. And the police department, in fact, going back to yesterday, has a program that deals with young people.
Right.
That they have encouraged those people who are part of that to then go on to try to be qualified as a police officer. And when you talk about seven, one of those seven people is one of the people I just described as starting and then going. So, so the model is, is a good model, especially in a community like this where people often wonder, you know, what's next after high school. And so there are a bunch of jobs that would fit that bill.
Could I add a comment to that? The Parks Department has worked with the Arizona Work Youth Program, I believe, to have youth teams out here during the summer. And I just commend them for that and hope it would continue. And I think Bullhead once had, had youth working in their transit area. And that, that youth actually went on to work for the city and that. So I agree, there are several departments that could be looked at to engage youth and, and college students for different and more technical positions.
And then Tina wants to.
I was just going to comment that the Utility Billing Department actually has a student intern, a high school student every year that comes in, seniors. And we actually have one of them that was interested in working at the police department and is now at the police department. So it does work.
That is good.
Okay.
Sorry to get kind of.
No problem. Other, other comments or questions about engineering?
I have just a quick question.
Sure.
This estimated budget proposal includes an additional employee.
Yep.
Technician two or something. Do you think that that would eliminate or, I guess, decrease the need for overtime? You think that would have an effect?
No, I think it has an effect on other professional services, which is, is the offset to this. What, what we, what we believe, not only for engineering, but for other departments as well, is that contemporary technology is, is going to make it easier and better for us to do, do the work of the division and provide service to the community. And so a foundational piece of that is GIS. Reasons that Greg can explain better and take longer than I can probably. But I, it's, so we think there are cost savings, Dave, we just don't think there are overtime.
Most of our overtime would be for the field inspectors, not necessarily for the office workers. In fact, I would say I don't think there's any of the office workers who've actually ever taken overtime. It's generally comp time if there is some reason they have to work overtime. But it's, it's more the inspectors who work with our Public Works Department when they're milling and filling on Stockton Hill Road twelve hours a night because they, they do that at night to avoid the traffic. And they're doing it five days a week so they can get out, get out of there as quick as they possibly can to get the traffic back opened up. That's, most of our overtime comes from support services. And with contractors, we also have a waterline project in Stockton Hill Road coming up this next fiscal year that will likely involve some overtime as well.
That actually, Dave, goes back to Vicky's question initially about how much overtime? Is the, the actual amount spent is, is well under the budget?
Right.
Right? And, and it just reinforces the point that Greg made about how it's used and where it's used. So we think, again, to summarize the point, we think there are real opportunities with having a much more aggressive, robust GIS program in the city that have cost-saving opportunities in a lot of places, not just engineering, but not so much on the overtime budget. Other questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg, we'll see you later when we talk about capital projects, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, thank you all.
Thank you. I'll leave it down with some mic placement and we're ready to go. Would you, somebody go. That's the baton. Nice.
We should put a sign that says you can come in.
Yeah.
Your sign says.
It says open need, come in.
Yeah.
It's not clear.
Have a chair, Michael. Right, right. That's for the guest. Mike is, is with us to talk about parks, aquatics, recreation and golf budget. The recommendations for fiscal eighteen nineteen. And as you remember from yesterday's overview, this is one of the areas of emphasis in the, in the recommended budget. And it's based on the feedback that you gave in January that this was some, a part of the budget that we needed to pay attention to. And so the first one is, is Recreation Administration. The amount is recommended is up by twenty-two thousand dollars. And the, the one-time distribution for employees that we discussed yesterday is eighty-five hundred. Overtime budget increased slightly by five hundred, temporary salaries fifty-nine hundred. And then we made an accounting change on where we showed the cost for the Hyde and Rec Center from professional contract services to program support. And so it's, I think, pretty straightforward on, on the Recreation Administration side.
I've got a question, Jim.
Yeah, sure.
On the key fiscal objectives.
Yep.
The last bullet point there says work on advertising all programs and events, which I agree. That's necessary to do that. When I look at the administration budget, I don't see any line item for, for marketing or advertising.
Ron certainly has the discretion to, you know, change the thought process. But for me, this was going to be driven by the community affairs person in the manager's office.
Oh, okay, thank you, consolidated.
Yeah.
Got it.
Or coherent message among all the people who are.
I agree.
Okay. Anything else? So this is, the next one, page one hundred and two to one hundred and five is parks. The, the highlights of this budget are two additional groundskeepers to address the need to improve grounds maintenance at cities parks. A hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred in the capital budget to replace aging playgrounds, equipment at firefighters and Metcalf. And the next statement probably needs a little more comment beyond what's there. The parks were selected based on their age. I, I had a conversation with Mike, I want to say six, eight weeks ago, about how, how we went about replacing old playground equipment. And you heard yesterday a lot of comments from me about how we would go about replacing equipment. And, and Mike basically said that this approach is that once the playground equipment is installed, it just stays there until something breaks. And then they try to fix what's broken and move on. And so that means to me that the oldest playground equipment is the most likely to be in need of replacement. And I asked Mike to provide a list by park of when we installed the equipment. And so the oldest playground equipment that we have in town is at firefighters and Metcalf. The other advantage to doing all, besides that way you don't have to worry about picking and choosing, is that it lets you develop a theme for that park. And, and so Ron and Mike and the commission can get together and decide that they want to have a theme at firefighters, that's one thing. And they could have a different theme at Metcalf. You have the financial resources to do it. And that's actually the third point I would make is, and you're going to, this is thematic to Park and Rec. The budget for this year for this type of, of capital outlay was ten thousand dollars. Can't do the job in this city's park system when it comes to equipment with that kind of funding. You know, it's a microcosm of the story that you have understood and supported regarding streets. And it's, it's not that the staff isn't appreciative to just be committed seven hundred and eighty or eight hundred and sixty thousand to streets, it's that you need to spend five times that to make this thing work. Mike's appreciative that you gave him ten thousand dollars this year. But it doesn't get the job done in, in park equipment. And so I would suspect that next year you'll see a similar number for more park equipment. Because that's, to me, a early hundred thousand dollar numbers, hundred, hundred and fifty, is about the recurring investment that you need to make in your park equipment. And then you broaden out into shade structures and those kinds of things. And I, I know that when you do the comparative analysis by line, you're like, wow, you know. I just suggest to you, that's because you're not looking at a realistic number for the base. The ten thousand dollar number doesn't come close to doing the job. So, so I'm, I'm super comfortable with this number is what I'm trying to tell you. And I think Ron and, and Mike can do some really good things with it. I mentioned shade structure, there's also a shade structure recommended for Centennial Park. We picked Centennial because that's the city's largest park, most volume. And we said, you know what? Likelihood is that more people will benefit from seeing this shade structure at that park than other parks. Doesn't mean that we couldn't bring a recommendation to you to add more shade structures. It just means this is a good one to start in. And, and so those three things explain why the budget increased by three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
What, what is the equipment age at each Fireman and Metcalf Park? And what is its, what is the service life?
Mike probably brought his sheet with him, I left mine in the office. I want to say it's like thirty, thirty-five years old.
I was going to say, there's things at Metcalf that were there when I was a kid playing in Metcalf, you know.
Don't date yourself. What's the service life?
So maybe I was wrong about how old this stuff was, right?
What's the service life deemed to be?
Depending, obviously depending on shade structures help prolong the life of the shade, of the playground equipment. And, you know, twenty, twenty-five years is a long time to, and much of this playground equipment is twenty, twenty-five years old. Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, and I apologize to councilmembers, stay that you're not bringing it. Because that was one of the things I intended to bring, is it's the how I got to the recommendation on this stuff. I want to, I want to say that Metcalf is like nineteen eighty-six. Metcalf, nineteen eighty. Nineteen eighty. And some of it's older than that, obviously, there's concrete pipe that kids crawl in, which is a much outdated type of playground equipment, even though we all had fun on it, but it's outdated, so. And then firefighters, Mike, is?
Nineteen seventy-six.
Yeah. And so. Seventy-six and eighty. So you get, you get a good understanding of two things, why I recommended the number and why I said all the things I said before we got to the, this is just a phrase that several of us used over the last couple of months when we've been talking about capital outlay and capital improvements is take care of what we have. This is vintage, take care of what we have. It involves, it involves the people in the community who want and need these kinds of facilities as a quality of life measure. So I, like I said, those three things explain why the, the budget increase for parks is three twenty-nine. Yeah.
And what's its service life deemed to be?
Ten to fifteen years.
So we're pushing three times that now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Stuart, but Ron, I think, wants to make a comment.
Yes, thank you, I'm, this is, I'm passionate about this. So park equipment, and I apologize.
No, please go ahead.
Park equipment is not something that you attach a useful life to. I've built and equipped a lot of parks in my career. And I'm, I'm telling you that the parks that I helped equip in the late nineties, although they're not that old, and counselor did not play on them as a youth. But those parks, the post and platform playgrounds are a thing of the past, they're dinosaurs. And so part of keeping parks relevant and usable are like adding the shades to them. But also, it's just a matter of keeping up with the times and what kids will play on. And so it's not really something where you tie a useful life to a piece of equipment in the playground. Is, is it being used? Because we can maintain it, you can usually maintain a piece of equipment in a, in a park for a long time. There's little, I don't know if you remember from the fifties, those little metal dome climbers that are still in parks throughout this country.
There's one over there.
Right. There's much better pieces of equipment today, I'll just tell you. But those are easy, you know, they can stay around forever, so, just, just to let you know, there's not, not really useful life on those.
I haven't even really necessarily useful life, practical or enjoyability.
Yeah, enjoyability, that's.
There you go, yeah.
Or is needed replaced with something more contemporary that's attractive to what can one play on now.
So just a couple of comments. First thing, I, I wanted to go back to this last page that talks about the demographics of Kingman. And I, there's this misconception, this is a retirement town, right? And if you look at this, nineteen and under represents over twenty percent of our population. And twenty to forty-four, which are a lot of families, is twenty percent of the population. We have a lot of kids and a lot of families that live here, and parks are a very important thing. And it's, it's awful that we have neglected them for so long. So just some of the things I wanted to talk about today is that I, I truly believe that in this next year, we should invest in a long-term comprehensive parks and open space plan. And Ron and I talked a little bit about it the other day. Again, we're, we're reacting to all this old equipment. Why aren't we looking forward and having a plan? This is where the next park is going to go, this is the next park that needs to be fixed up. I think that there should be a public survey, asking the public, which parks do they normally play at? What's their favorite park? What would they like to see? What are their priorities when it comes to parks and open space and trails even? And then on that note, I would like to add trails to Parks and Rec. I think that we should be looking at it from a recreation standpoint and how we can bring this in as another park and another thing for families and for people. I mean, trails aren't just for families. We have several hiking groups that I just found out about that are out walking. So it's good for everybody and it's something that we readily have. So I'd like to start planning ahead for the future of our parks and really do it a better service. I think that maybe next year when we talk about replacing equipment, it should be in the parks that are used the most versus the oldest, unless we're talking about equipment that's dangerous, you know. But we really should be putting shade covers over the most popular parks. And then that's my last point, is that I really want to see more shade covers go in. In the summer, the equipment's too hot to play on. If you don't get to the park before nine o'clock, you can't play on it all day because it, it will burn you. You're, you know, it's, it's not fun, you can't play on them. So for, for several months of the year, our playground equipment is almost worthless because it can't be put on, it's too hot. And our kids shouldn't be playing in the sun that long anyway and getting burned while they're out having a. And our kids shouldn't be playing in the sun that long anyway and getting burned while they're out having a good time. So, if, can you tell us what a shade cover, what it will cost?
They range from 20 to 40,000 dollars and beyond. It depends on the nice one that you want.
Right.
And some of you have heard me say this. My kids live out east, and I go out there and they have shade structures over their playgrounds. And I come back here, and ours are dangerously hot, and we don't have them. So, I've been pushing for shade structures on playgrounds for a long time, really.
It also increases the life of the equipment. I mean, there's many, there are many other things, but it just gives you more time to play. I was recently in Laughlin at a new park that they have. We were going on a trail. They have a huge cover over it. And we were out there in the middle of the day in Laughlin. And it made it much cooler and just kids really enjoyed it, so. I'm glad to see an investment in our parks.
Couple, couple of things. The first one in reaction to Mike's comment about 20 to 40, depends on what you're doing with the shade structure.
Yeah.
Right. The one that we've got in the budget as a recommendation for Centennial, my recollection is it's less than 20 for that one. So it depends, as you suggest, what you're doing. The second is that if the council is interested in Jamie's suggestion about adding trails to the Park and Recreation Department as a functional responsibility, it would be good that you let us know that because Tina and her team can do the necessary moving of numbers or that requires some tactical stuff.
I'd like to make a comment to that. When we had the joint meeting with the commissioners,
Yeah.
I sat at the parks table along with Mr. Mearsman. And two, I think two things rose to the top. And those two things were the urban trails and dog parks. And that was, I think, the priority that came out of that day for them. And so I think that there's a lot of support for an urban trail system and that that is something that we need to integrate into this budget to the extent we can. The other thing, if I could go on to speak to the dog parks, I see that there is.
Yeah, we was gonna say, they're coming up, but.
Oh, okay, should I wait for that? Because I'd be glad to, but.
I'd like to get closure, if we could, on Jamie's idea about trails, right? Being a part, not whether they're important for the city. I think there's unanimous agreement about that. The question is administratively, I mean, if I miss here and you just jump in, but. But the idea is that administratively, trails and trail development should be a part of Park and Rec's responsibility. That's right?
That is what I'm saying. Because it is a recreation activity.
Right, exactly.
I think parks has a mindset for that.
And so to do that, right, will require Tina and her team to make some administrative changes in terms of how the budgets are prepared and that kind of stuff. And so if that, if that's your interest as a council, then we can get that done between now and the time, first meeting in June, when it becomes a preliminary budget, and then it just goes forward that way for the fiscal year. And so I took your comments to be supportive of that idea. Based on, based on the change we're workshop.
Right.
I was saying that was important to them.
If I could just add another little piece in to that. When we were in talks about creating the White Cliffs Trail, the money for the White Cliffs Trail, if you'll remember last year in the budget, went to tourism. And then Public Works was a part of that conversation. And then we, and Mike Mearsman was there also. So it's a, we don't have a clear path right now when we talk about our trail systems of who would be responsible or who is most appropriate. But I think in a lot of other cities, trails do fall under Parks and Rec and then be open space, which to me makes the most sense. So that's why, that's why I think that this would be a way to start making our trails a priority is by really saying, this is the department that oversees it.
Travis?
You know, absolutely on the trails. Definitely yes for me. I had some comments too. I brought up the playground equipment several months ago. It's a quality of life thing, like you just said, right? And it's, we saw a presentation that you gave to council a while ago about tourism. I think it's a part of tourism too. A lot of people come to a community and visit it before they actually move there. Playground equipment in nice parks, you know, it's something that helps to recruit and retain working families. And historically, I think, we've just sort of ignored working families and kids. Kids are easy to take away from because they don't vote, right? But I want to, you know, we need modern playground equipment. I think this fiscal year, this next fiscal year is coming up. I appreciate that we're looking at the oldest stuff first, but I really think that we need to start at the parks that are the highest used. And then, and then work our way in future fiscal years to parks that, you know, where age is maybe a factor, right, in some sort of a formula. And also, you know, shade structures at all of our parks to keep kids safe, right? We don't want anybody to get burned or to get hurt. So, I don't know if we have enough money in this budget, but I'd like to see it increased. I'd like to see us do more this next fiscal year. And if that means taking away somewhere else that's lower in the survey, then I would be.
Hang on to that idea to make sure of it. Okay, I'll come back to that. I'm still trying to make sure I know where we're at on, on the idea that Jamie raised. And now, I know where you are, I know where you are, I know where Jamie is. So now I need to know where Vicky and Dave and Stuart are. And then we can go to the next series of points.
I just had a quick question. When we're referring to trails, are we referring to walking trails or walking and biking trails?
Multi-use.
Multi-use.
Okay, multi-use trail.
Versus.
The concept is that you can walk around and bike around without ever having to, the city, without ever having to get on a.
And so you're supportive of the idea of moving the departments.
100%.
Be open. Vicky?
I would just have to see where we were taking the money from first. But in theory, of course, I support everything everyone has said.
Okay, so let me explain the, that's why I asked Travis to hold on to the idea about additional dollars. What this is about, which I now know where all of you are. What this is about is simply who's administratively responsible for trails. And as a consequence of that, whose budget trails and trail development comes from. And what you've just said is you would like that to be in parks. So what Tina and her team will do is identify those pieces, parts in the other departments that relate to trails and trails development, some of which is in economic development, some of which is in public works, you get, and move that.
But historically, we have spent no money.
Well, that's what I'm getting to.
Okay, sorry. I just want to make that clear to people.
So, so that's the, that's the first piece, is to just, is that we get the administration aligned. Okay, and so, check on that part. The next one that I want to address that goes to Vicky's point about where does the money come from is actually an item that you're gonna have on Tuesday night's agenda about White Cliffs Trail, which I believe several of you, if not most of you, believed could be financed out of the $100,000 initiatives budget used to be TDC. There is a disagreement over whether or not for that money to be used for trails, it had to be a project or a activity or, you know, what the category was. And so, the solution that I will propose Tuesday night is, which I assume will happen, actually, is that the council will say, yeah, we want to go forward with this trail. And then we'll take, and we need another $30,000 to make this work. We'll take that money from the same tourism dollars that you thought it was coming out of this year, except it won't, because it won't have been spent. It'll, just like we did the truck a minute ago, it'll, it'll fall into the bed tax fund and then get re-appropriated as the $30,000 now as a part of the park budget instead of somebody else's budget. So that's how, that's how you answer the question of where the money comes from on trails. It doesn't address the question, and I think Mike probably needs to do some homework on this. It doesn't, take your time, Mike. You got two weeks.
Thanks.
Is Jamie's point about the master plan, right? And so, if you wanted to do that, which I haven't polled the group, I had, on, Mike would need to come back with a number for that. I would propose that the way that that happens is we let you know what that number is. It will be added to the preliminary here, right, the next one, to the preliminary budget. And then you can choose to either keep it in or take it out. But it's in, it's harder to take preliminary budget data and add to it than it is to take it out. Trust me on that, it's.
And that's for a long-term parks, open space plan.
Correct.
Not, we're not just talking about trails anymore.
Correct. That's precisely, so that's two.
Okay.
Ms. Brayson?
Yes, ma'am.
For that, that planning, would that also integrate the park site acquisition that we're scheduled to do this year?
True.
And that would cover trails, parks, and dog parks, all of those components?
The only thing I would caution you on that is that the city needs to move in fiscal '19 on the park site. Because those dollars have expiration dates. I'm sorry, Jamie.
Well, kind of building on what she was talking about, we just heard a presentation about people who wanted soccer fields.
Right.
People who want a lake, a fishing lake, and they want, and it went, it's gonna go right across from Centennial. If we did a public survey, we would know how many people liked the lake, how many people want soccer fields, how many people want more dog parks, where to put them, where are we missing opportu, I mean, I know you get that vibe. I'm just letting everybody else know that a long-term plan brings everybody together.
Yeah, so the thing I was trying to jump ahead to is on the park site, right? That's, I meant that literally. It's a park site. Programming of it is a different question.
So we just buy the land.
You're buying land. You're buying X acres of land on the east side of town, which is a condition of the dollars we have to buy the site. And then, and then, once you figure that out, then you can go to the next step about programming it and, you know, whether there's.
Got it.
Whatever there's down there, okay?
And one more comment, perhaps most, more for Manager Foggan. When we do speak to the property that there's, we saw the presentation on the soccer fields and the lake, but we do know that that's county land. And so we really need to have that dialogue and the negotiation kind of with the stakeholders, the Elks Club, the Smasburg Kids, and the county before we can probably know what that design could even be. And when it comes to the lake, and I had a discussion with one of those stakeholders, and I said, that may have to go to a ballot measure because it's so controversial to use water right now. But anyway, that's just.
I appreciate the comments about the Centennial Park adjacency piece, but I'm still trying to work through the, work through the mechanic. So that's with, given the council's comfortable with that approach, then that's, that's how we would do the master plan part, is have Mike identify what a budget number would look like for that. We'll add it as an item to the, to this department, which you can choose to keep or not when you do the preliminary budget. And Tina has, I'm sure, made a note about that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that. Now let's get to the one that Travis mentioned. I'm not sure how many things he's suggesting in the same paragraph.
Everything.
Because, yeah, that's, okay, so here's, here's what I hear. I hear that he's supportive of the recommendation for 139 to do playground replacement. Okay, fine. I, I hear him supporting the idea that on a go-forward basis, we ought to look at use as the determining value or where we make the investment.
Including fiscal year 18, 19.
And that's the part I wasn't clear up, okay? So, because where it gets, we got uncertain for me is at the tail end, you suggested that the 139 be increased to some unspecified number.
Well, when you look at the survey, as we did yesterday, that was done in January. What we're doing, I mean, you had services that were rated very high, and you had services that were rated very low. And we have X amount of resources that we have to attribute to all of those, right? And we're doing a balancing act, right? What I'm saying is, we take more from up here and we reallocate it to, to the family-friendly working family stuff, that stuff, that's quality of life stuff to balance it, you bet.
I'm sorry, this, this air handling unit has not been my friend for two days here. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get an idea of what funding level you're suggesting for 18, 19. Okay, and that's why I started off. It's clear to me that 139 is, 139.9 is a number you're, you know, it's like, yeah, at least that, right? Does it, so then, I'm trying to.
Let me, let me try to clarify.
Yeah.
Because I don't want your head to explode. I know it's a lot, right? It's kind of ambiguous. So, so how about instead of age, we take the top three most-used parks in the city and we start there this next fiscal year? And then that gives you time to work out all the rest.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that. Here's, here's the idea that I'm struggling with, obviously struggling with, is I'm clear that you would take the 139.9 and program it based on a different metric than age.
Right.
I get that. I'm okay with that. But there's also a piece of the feedback from you and maybe from councilmember Staley that says, I'd like to see the number higher and talk about for 18, 19. And so then I, my question back to you guys is, higher to what number?
Well, that's why I said, maybe we start with the. It looks like we're reprogramming a couple of parks.
Yes.
I say maybe we throw in one more. So you bump that number up to three parks? And then instead of the three oldest parks, you do the three most-used parks first?
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Got it. And so then, my last piece to the, this is to the group. And this is one of the 196 things I've asked Ron to take care of. Good thing it's been a three-day visit, right?
Yeah, I was on four.
Yeah, right, so. Is the way I, the way I understand the park commission right now, the actual programming of that money would be up to them, not to the staff and to the council.
Well, their recommendation would come to council, and we would have approval, right?
They'd be the ones who did the primary work of putting together this, if you will, the recommendation. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a traditional staff gets together, brings it to you, council reacts to it. It would, they have, the way I read their charter, if you will. They have, they have responsibility regarding the programming of dollars.
So what they would be presented with, then, if I'm hearing you right, is council has directed you, Par, Sure, so what they would be presented with, then, if I'm hearing you right, is council has directed you, PAR, to look at the, the three most-used parks, and here is the budget to reprogram those playground equipment. You recommend the specific programming that goes into those parks as a recommendation.
For playgrounds.
Comes back to the city council at council meeting, and then we either approve it as recommended, or we recommend changes, and then approve it or send it back.
Yeah, and, and the only, the only caveat I'd give you on that is that, I'm, I'm presuming it meets the threshold for council approval on, on dollars.
Nice.
Okay, so, okay? So Mike has two assignments. One of them is the, the, uh, plan, and the second one is, um, to identify a third park, that, which is, becomes the delta between one thirty-nine-nine and some higher number.
Do we have any numbers about how many people visit each park?
Oh, kind of numbers.
Now, would be tough to be done as part of your park plan.
Part of the comprehensive plan, that's what I figured, because it'd be easier to make these decisions if we knew.
The plan, the plan would include community outreach, surveying, it would do a study of where your parks are, it would do a study of what, what activities you offer, and it's, it's trails, parks, and recreational facilities.
I think we need that.
Yeah, so I.
So should we wait to, um, pick up a, another park until we have the plan in place?
So I do, I.
No, just go for it, okay, because everything's so.
Well, so, so, um, in, in three business days, this opinion will be worth much less, right? You know, because of what Ron just said about the plan, and because of where we're at with the conditions, right? I would actually think you'd be better off collectively to do a hybrid, where you address the old parks and have money to program based on use, the balance of the system. Because I don't think you're gonna get your plan done until very late in the fiscal year, and so you.
So they take a long time.
So, yeah, so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna put doing anything in fiscal eighteen nineteen, uh, risk, not because of money, but because of the, the data of the plan, but.
I think just to start, um, you know, just, just by use, um, it's not a bad place to start, because if we've heard that the age of everything, you know, it's way past its, I, I, you know, you can't assign a service life, but it's all, it's all pretty old and perhaps outdated, I don't know.
Well, I, I hear your comment about, uh, or Mr. Foggan about, do they use it? And, and we may find some areas that really need equipment that will be used, and so that would be a good, good thing to look at.
Well, and it also, a, a good parks master plan also gives you the opportunity to, to classify your parks. You know, these are your A parks, these are your B parks, these are your C parks, based on, you know, where they're located, how much they're used, how much care goes into them. So it, it's, it really, it really does give you the groundwork to know where to spend your money.
And if I'm not mistaken, nothing is recruiting PAR committee or commission from reaching out into the community somehow to ask for their help. It's to, hey, what sort of programming equipment do you guys want the community want in this, in these three first parks, right? I mean, they're empowered to do that.
And that's, and that's what your parks master plan should do, is, is.
Yeah.
It reach out, it'll reach out and ask the citizens, what do you want to see in your parks? What do you want your parks to be? That way you get to hear from, you, you get an input from those that are gonna be taking children to parks, as well as people sixty-five and older that, that want to use your parks. Because the parks are something that are, can be and are being used by all ages. It's a livability, it really is a livability issue.
As far as the playground equipment goes for these first three parks, the PAR commission could reach out to say what sort of equipment do the families in Kingman want to see.
They could.
Yeah, I mean, it's an option.
Okay, um, so Vice Mayor Miles has been very patient, talked about dog parks, and she probably thought we forgot that she was.
I did not think you forgot, I really didn't, I was just being patient. Uh, and everybody knows I'm going to pick on the dog parks, because they really did come up, uh, very forcefully at that commission meeting. And I was glad, because we have a really good, uh, dog park at Lewis Kingman, but I, one of these two dog parks, is that the expansion of that dog, of Lewis Kingman? When we did the fire?
No.
These are different.
Those are different ones. Um, the two that we're talking about now are, uh, one at Centennial Park, behind the ball field, ball field number seven, where it's grass now, and there's trees by the, uh, academy. In that area, and then another one is, uh, at Wallack Ranch, in the legacy side of Wallack Ranch. And that won't be grass, but it'll be fenced in dirt for a run area for the dogs. And then a third one that I talked about, that's not budgeted for, but I thought would be a good future site, would be a little stormwater retention area along eastern, the fence is already there, but it's gonna, it would take some money to get some things in place and.
I remember that, I, I don't remember the name of the person, but she was wanting the washes to, that, that idea, to somehow convert them into runs for the dogs, because there's so many areas of the city that people don't really have a place to walk their dogs, and, and this could give them exercise room, and so many of them need that. So, uh, the thing that I'm wondering about, I see there's portable restroom dedicated for this, but is there shade? Because when people go to the dog park, they have, they sit and they watch their dogs, as a rule. So there, there needs to be a table and, and, you know, like the Ramada at the, uh, dog park, it's so popular. And does, does that have any, was there a plan for that?
Well, there are a lot of trees in that shade, the area at Centennial Park, and we would put a bench with a shade over it at, uh, the Legacy Park. Wouldn't be a full-fledged Ramada, but that'd be another twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars.
Is there water?
Uh, there will be water, yes.
Because there has to be water. Okay, I'll just give you the comments that I have heard. Uh, when you're thinking of what goes in the parks, people really would like a water feature, because, you know, just something for the dogs to get in and lie down and, or drink, uh, so that they, not drink, they really want them to have a, you know, frolic and a little pool of, of water. And, um, and the other thing is, if, if there is a place that could have a little bit of agility equipment in it for, you know, people that want to play with their dogs and try to train them, uh, these are, these are quality-of-life things for dog owners, and, and there are a lot of them here. So, um, yeah, I would ask that those things be integrated into, to the dog park thinking.
Those aren't in the number that we have.
Then that's an area where we might want to look to, because we need, if we're going to create these amenities for our, the, the worst thing is people take their dogs out and say, there, I don't have a place to sit, I don't have any shade. There's no wa- well, there is water, but if, if we can enhance it a little bit, I think people would really appreciate that.
I saw Mike take the notes.
I think the wash idea is really neat, um, because that's an area where they could really run, we already own it. Uh, I think there's access by the bike lane, or the bike route that goes through the wash. When I was in Bend, I noticed, um, that they had an area along the river where, you know, it was a bike, it was a dog park, and then you could, you know, throw a ball out so they could get in the water and retrieve it and bring it back for all your, your water dogs. So, pe- it was full of people, they loved it, the dogs loved it, and it was a really fun place. We don't have water like that, but the wash would give them something similar for, for retrievers that just wanted to run and come back.
They need to run and chase the ball.
Neat use of space, and it's only filled with water once or twice a year.
Anything else about parks? Good, thank you, uh, let me.
One more thing about parks, maybe it's not the right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, um, oh gosh, I missed my spot, but turf management. Can we talk about turf management for a second?
Sure.
I want to make sure that, um, we have enough resources allocated, um, to achieve the desired outcomes of go-for elimination and improving the turf condition and better playing services for community sports. Because that's something that I hear again, and again, and again, and again, and again.
I have, I have an answer to that, but Mike needs to give the answer so that Ron hears it.
Um, the question again?
The question was, so I want to make sure that there's enough resources allocated in the fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget to achieve the desired outcomes of go-for elimination, elimination, uh, improving the turf condition, and make, and achieving better playing services for, uh, community sports.
Yeah, and, and we're working on a lot of that, and the, the equipment that we budgeted is, uh, addressing a lot of those situations.
Thanks, Mike, that is exactly the answer I expected him to give, which is yes. And Ron and I have had conversations, and Mike and I have had conversations, to make sure that yes is the answer, not only today, but throughout the year.
Great, thanks.
And we've made good strides right now, I think, if you go to the soccer fields and look at them in the ball fields, uh, from the year we had last year. And I, Jim doesn't like me to talk about last year, but we've made a lot of good strides already this spring with the conditions of the soccer fields and the ball field, so.
Good, there you go.
Hi.
Vicki, go ahead.
I have, are you done?
Yes.
Um, the, the budget that we have here, um, these soccer tournaments that we cannot host because of turf.
Yeah.
Um, quality, will that take care of it?
Well, I, I think, like I said, we've come a long way with, and, and keep in mind that our soccer fields aren't just for soccer. They're multi-use fields, and you've heard me say that over and over, that they're used for everything. They're used for playgrounds, for, uh, phys ed classes, they're, it's, at Centennial Park, they're used for everything, so they, they are, it's very challenging. Right now, the police department's out there with their, um, training, and, and all, all the, uh, police departments in the area use it for, um, all the, all the different, uh, exercises for training, for recruiting, so there are a lot of challenges to it. But, uh, we've made really good strides so far, so we're working hard to keep it as good as it can possibly be.
So did that answer, uh, did that answer the question?
Well, I think, you know, it's, we're, we're doing our very best to be able to accommodate those soccer tournaments.
I think to bring in an, are you talking about a big soccer tournament, Vicki, like a, where you bring?
I'm referring to the last one where none of the city, um, fields could be used because of the quality.
Yeah, I don't think that we could host a huge soccer tournament where people come from all over the United States to play, like they, like they're doing in, like, Havasu or Phoenix, because we don't have designated fields.
Soccer fields.
A lot of our kids are still playing on the outfield of the ball fields and things like that. So we, I, I think until we build an actual soccer park, we're not gonna be able to have big tournaments.
My point is, uh, the last soccer tournament, um, all the school fields were employed, um, everything was maxed out, and it was, it was not, it was not good that we couldn't use any of our.
Well, that was after the twenty-seven days with no water, so that's why, the challenge was last year was the twenty-seven days with no water, that's what.
I, I think that was the, um, softball tournament, not the, not the most recent soccer tournament. The most recent one, no city property could be used, and that's just unfortunate.
You have something?
Yeah, just to support, uh, what Vicki's saying, you know, I'm sure that there's obviously a lot of good excuses and reasons why we're not where we want to be. But, well, Mike, what our question is, was, is there enough resources for you in this budget?
And the answer was yes.
To get to the mark.
Yeah, and so, and I just, I'll close on it, so we could go talk about pools and addressing another, uh, park, like, challenge. Is that, um, Mike accurately describes our conversations when he says, I'm not interested in what happened in the past. I'm interested in what we're doing today to make tomorrow better. And, and so the park budget that I just went through with you, that includes the two people and the, all the other stuff, right? Was intentionally put together to address Travis's question, so that it could be a yes. And, um, and so that's gonna be something that Ron and Mike have to deal with in the next fourteen months, thirteen months, however long it is between now and June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. But from a resource standpoint, I think it's, the answer is clearly yes.
Before we close on it, um, I just had one more thing, I apologize, and I hate to belabor this again and again, and again, and again. Um, but, you know, as, as you know, I'm a huge fan of getting employees home on time to their families, and it looks like we increased the overtime in this budget and added, uh, new employees. So, um, I, I understand, um, the need for overtime when we're talking about departments that have emergency services or things that happen after hours. Do we have, like, park emergencies? Are we understaffed, is that why we need more overtime, or is, is there any way we could convert the twenty thousand to two part-time employees or something? I just, I don't like the, the idea of making people work more than forty hours and spending, you know, financially, time and a half, essentially.
Yeah, so the.
If we could pay an employee a regular salary and, and get at least some more work.
So the answer to, to the question, um, is that, uh, there are such things as park emergencies, um, in, in the first place.
And, and is there any way to flex time, or, or is there, do, do they need to be working overtime?
For his permanent employees, Mike tries to do that, Dave, I would tell you that, okay? And, and the third thing I was gonna say to you is, um, your comments are actually, uh, in part, a reaction to what Travis brought up about making sure that this budget addressed the concerns the council has, uh, shared with us about turf management and those kinds of things. A year from now, when, when Ron is before you, talking about the twenty nineteen-twenty budget, right? He, he may, in, in working with Park and Recreation, have come up with a, a different and superior strategy to this one to keep turf, uh, at the levels that, that I know that Ron expects and that, that you guys expect. Uh, but in the short term, we, we're very confident this is adequately resourced, and want to see, uh, Mike deliver on the commitment that he just made to the six of you. So that's, that's, that's my answer to you, I, um, I don't know what else to say, except I want to talk about the pools.
I think if anything came out of this, it's that council's very passionate about improving our parks, delivering a good, uh, Parks and Rec program to our citizens, and that maybe we haven't had enough time in the last year to talk about parks and what we can do to improve the service and quality, so.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that there's another thing that came out of this morning's conversation, uh, Jamie, and that is that your new city manager's as passionate as this council is about parks.
I'm looking forward to it.
So, uh, let me quickly talk about pools. Uh, this is easy to me, uh, the budget for the pools is up twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one of that is to replace the lane lines and the furniture, which are called basics in the pool business. And so, that's, that's it, I mean, if there, if somebody has questions about it, I'd be glad to try to answer them, but, uh, to me, that's pretty straightforward. Okay, let me move, let me move to the golf course. The, the budget in the golf division is, is up by eighty-four thousand, uh, which is six percent. And what we're recommending here is that a position be added called Assistant Golf Superintendent. And Dave has, um, developed a theme about people working extended hours beyond forty, and that they need to be home. Mike Mirsman was hired to be the, the Golf Superintendent, and the, um, Park and Recreation Director's job became vacant. And one of my predecessors thought it'd be a really good idea to have Mike do both jobs. I think that's a good plan for three months, it might be a good plan for six months. I, I'd wonder if it went for a year, and this would be what year for you, Mike?
Since two thousand and eleven.
Since two thousand and eleven.
Seven, you know, that just, I mean, I can't tell you this any more directly, that needs to end, and that's what this budget does, is end that. Mike will continue to be both the Park and Recreation Director and, uh, the Golf Superintendent, but his responsibilities will be focused on running the department, not running the, uh, turf program at the golf course. And so that's, uh, the, the number-one thing I want you to know. And then to, to augment that, in case you hadn't noticed, turf is, is one of the themes, uh, this year, is to, uh, convert a part-time to a full-time position, um, and so that's, that's the people part of it. The next item in the, in the golf course budget, to me, is just like, I, I think I've said this to every one of you when we've met, uh, over the last couple of months, it's like, there are some things you just put in budgets because, uh, that's, that's what they're about, you know, you don't, you don't have a. about, you know, you don't, you don't have a shop for your vehicles and not have a budget for parts, yeah, right? I can't explain why for years, the golf division has had a budget for the golf course that didn't include things like fertilizer, this budget changes that, and says, we will give you the adequate resources to to do it correctly, and while we appreciate your efforts to be creative and inventive and save money and all those good things, this is an expense that goes with the golf course, and and then we we tried to make the the course look better, both outside on the track and inside at the clubhouse this year, and so, the amount of money, excuse me, recommended for capital outlay drops as a result of that, and I think we need to focus on the the things that I just touched on, and then lastly, not an item in the the budget itself, but this is the year that the management contract expires for the clubhouse and the restaurant, and Ron and Mike will be doing an RFP for that, and so, that's what's going on at the golf course, and if I take questions or comments from the council about that.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
The $8,000 for furniture is for the clubhouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Travis.
Is the is the golf course, does it lend itself, since where are we going to go with our RFP this year, how much money is the golf course bringing in, or is it, is it something that we may want to look at?
Yeah, Tina can.
Something like sanitation?
It's a different issue than sanitation, the golf course revenues Tina can share with you are pretty flat, and the the revenues are less than the expenses, they're they're so significantly different that the city doesn't use an enterprise fund model for golf, because you'd be writing a check from the general fund to the golf course fund, and that's not the point of an enterprise fund, and so, the the revenues have not come close to matching expenses for a long, long time, I don't, I calculated that a long time ago, and it doesn't come to the top of my mind right now, but it's, it's a city-owned and partially managed facility right now, you know, we do the, we do the turf side and we contract the rest, and I think Ron will wind up having to sort out how that model's working for the city as as 2018-19 goes by, that's, if you look around, a lot of golf courses that are municipally owned, they're either managed entirely by a private side or entirely by a public side.
Right.
And and we've tried for years and years and years to do half of each.
When is that contract?
It's, 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 the end of it is December 31st, 2018, sometime during the summer, Mike and Ron will start the RFP process, and and it'll go from there and see what what happens on the, on how it gets managed in 2019 and beyond, but it's, the the thing that, in my five months here, you know, really got my attention more than anything else was this attempt, it's pretty longstanding to to split half and half.
So, does that mean when we issue the RFP that we're going to maintain that model, or will you decide before the RFP whether to change the model?
You can actually get to changing the model by using the RFP process.
Okay.
And and that's code for that, you would have the the city be one of the proposers in the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
So, is that like a managed competition type of a model, where you have the the city provide a quote in advance of the others as well?
It's exactly what it is.
Yep.
You know, when I first saw this, I wasn't sure, you know, I wasn't sure about investing just as much into the golf course as we were all of the other parks, so at first I was against it, but as I've thought about it, you know, that the golf course, it's been neglected like everything else, there's broken chairs in the clubhouse that people are using, and, you know, on and on, there, there were problems and we need to invest in it, but I have to say that this has to be the year where something has to change, and things have to get better, and we need to make much bigger, harsher decisions with it, so I am in favor at this point in in hiring extra people, putting extra fertilizer to improve the turf and fixing all those broken chairs and those kind of things, but I would say that, you know, we need to try some new things with the golf course, and I know, just in talking to some of the golfers, they have ideas about events that could be held or ways that the golf course could start making more money, I think we need to include everybody and really look at a better way to run the golf course, you know, so that it can start performing at a, at a higher level, bringing in more golfers, encouraging new people to learn how to play golf, all those kind of things, just, I think, need more of a focus so that, so that it it's used by by more people in the community and it's running well.
One of the challenges that Kingman has with the way its golf course is structured is that when the city assumed responsibility for operating it, it, in its fee schedule, it established annual permits rather than discount rates individually, so for, rates now, what, $1,300 a year, Mike?
Yeah.
On the fee schedule, so for $1,300 a year, a person who pays that can play golf as much as they want, and, you know, if if they pay 10 times, they're, they're paying Phoenix rates, if they play 50 times, they're not, right, and so, play for those, and there's about 150 of them, I think 153 last I counted, their play doesn't have any effect on the revenue side, and so, when you look at how other municipal golf courses were structured, that wasn't the case, they got a discount, and sometimes a pretty deep discount, but there was a relationship between the frequency of play and the cost to them, and therefore the revenue to the city, and that's not the case for us, and so, we live in a, in a pretty narrow time window every day to have people come play who are not the annual permit folks.
Right.
Just to echo off of Jamie's comments, you know, I think that the two metrics should be, obviously, player experience and quality of facilities, and it kind of goes back to the RFP, I mean, player experience and quality of facilities, I don't think it really matters in the end if it's city-run or if it's run by somebody else, as long as you give the best player experience and the best quality of facilities, and, you know, especially in a place where we have a tight budget.
Right.
At least look at what you looked at.
Anything else on golf? You know what's next, Mike?
Economic Development, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Economic Development's recommended budget pages are 113 to 116, and the, the biggest budget highlight of Economic Development Department is actually that the airport is a part of it, and that obviously just happened, as it relates to the other shops that are part of the department, the planning staff that was in the current budget has been reassigned, part of the admin support for planning, which is Sandy Fellows, most of you know, that we just put in to to support the entire department, that's the half, and then the other one is a senior planner that was in planning that I'm recommending be called the Neighborhood Development Specialist. The next thing, which all of you know, is that we don't allocate financial resources to any of our commissions to program, and so, the the two that were relevant here with TDC and EDMC, and so, those dollars are part of of this budget, the the last thing is the Targeted Industry Program Manager position, which is really an individual that's going to deal with manufacturing and be located at the airport, that position is, is a part of the department, but 80% of the funding for that position will be charged to the So, that's, that's what's in Economic Development, given the time that we spent on Park and Rec, if if you'd indulge me, I might just like to walk through the rest of the the department, and then we can kind of address concerns about the entirety of it, rather than go through unit by unit. In planning, because of what I just said, the the budget for planning is reduced, and that's because, from my perspective, while planning is an important service, the the staff, the ongoing professional staff, two physicians to me is is the reasonable number, because most of the other planning that we're going to be talking about is going to be contract planning activities, we just talked about one in Park and Rec, that that effort to me would be contracted rather than have our staff do the, do the work, so that's how I get to two rather than a higher number, and then, the rest of it to me is is pretty straightforward, we've got money included in there to support the Planning and Zoning Commission on this citywide training initiative, and the internal service allocations down by about 12,000. On the, on the tourism side, we, we had a position over at Powerhouse called Customer Service Representative that actually functions like an administrative assistant, so that that's what that change is about, the, we periodically remind you that the budget includes this one-time special distribution money, and so, that that's in their budget, the Professional and Contract Services line includes a $9,000 contract to allow us to use Jim Hinkley to promote tourism in Kingman, especially regarding the Route 66, and because we're not using TDC as a, as a format for resource allocation, the rest of these items that you see on the, on the screen are formally in in the TDC budget, and someday, the Powerhouse will actually have an entry sign, and so, that's what the 25,000's for in the capital budget, that's tourism. Last and certainly not least, the airport, we established this as an enterprise fund, the budget data that we use is all from the caper prepared by KAA, so, this is a reasonable approximation of what a budget would look like for the airport if we predicated that budget on the comprehensive financial information that the airport authority provided. Gary Kellogg and I have had conversations about this budget, Tina and I have had conversations about this budget, we think it will be different in a number of respects as we move through 2019, 18, 19, we just can't tell you with any, you know, specificity how different. We're obviously bound by the revenue constraints out there, which appear to be pretty accurate, we're bound by all sorts of regulations the FAA gave us as a result of a series of transactions, and so, that that will have an effect, we have made really good progress in the last 10 days out there, not only on the stuff that you can see, but at least as importantly to me, and I I trust to Ron as well, in the approach that we're going to use to deal with administrative issues and maintenance issues, and let me explain that just briefly. We believe that administratively, what we did last week, just to get started, which is use Tina and her team and Jackie and her team, is a model that will work going forward, essentially on a permanent basis, which means that the the complicated financial transactions, the human resources recruitment, and intervention issues that HR staffs are always a part of, can be provided out of this building rather than create those at the airport, similarly, we believe that the the maintenance that you saw last week, provided by Public Works and Parks, can be provided on an ongoing basis out there with build-back features that take the the amount of resources we've used and charge it to the airport, so that there's a dollar value to them, but there's, there's not an effort to build up the staff, so we're, we're so encouraged by that model that, that's the third reason that I think that this budget will change pretty significantly, and so, this, I guess I just ask you to think of this as a placeholder, so, that's, that's economic development.
Just real quickly to your point about what the city's been undertaking or doing in the last week, week and a half, I just want to say I really like whoever wrote, "Under Major Services and Responsibilities: To Provide An Attractive Front Door City of Kingman And Facilities For Business And Tourist Visitors," I think that was well said, I think, I think it was well seen how the paint was peeling. Been waiting all day. I got some questions. Where to start? Going through the budget here, maybe I'm just not seeing it, but I'm looking for software subscriptions, since we just took over the airport, I'll give you an example, and we have a industry, Targeted Industry Program Manager that's going to be first chair out at the park, I don't see any software subscriptions, and one software that that we may want to look into is something called Synchronist, back in 2012, the current County Economic Development Director and myself, we did a Building Bridges to Business Retention Survey at the airport, that was the last time a report like that was done, I think that since we just took over the airport, now is a good opportunity to do another V3 survey out there with the businesses to gauge where they're at and how we go forward.
Yep.
It's just as important as slapping on a new coat of paint in Synchronist Streets.
Don't disagree at all.
So, and there's other things too, I know that the county side for Economic Development, they have some GA, some really neat GA neat GAS tools where they have online. You can go online and you can search for available buildings and sites all in one spot. It's got some overlays that you can do, or demographics to help businesses to cite their business or industries to cite where they want to be. I'd like to see us participate in that if we can.
Yep.
So, marketing and advertising, let's see, where's that at? Do we have any money program for marketing or advertising for economic development? I'm not seeing it. And basically, what I'm looking at there is maybe our staff coming up with some quantitative marketing materials, not just qualitative stuff, but quantitative marketing materials on our targeted industries to help with retention, expansion, and attraction. Then over on the fiscal year objectives, something else I'd like to see us come up with, and there may be a cost associated with it if staff doesn't do it in-house, is the IEDC, which is the National Economic Development. They have a set of data standards, which site selectors use as an apples-to-apples comparison to compare communities. I'd like to see Kingman compile our IEDC data standards and throw those up on the website for site selectors and businesses. If there's a cost for that, I'd like to see that covered. So under the...
Could I respond to your first three because I might not remember the next?
You're not taking notes? I'm just kidding. It's all up here, right?
Yeah, right now it is. So, in regard to the first question about county materials.
Software subscriptions.
Right. We intend to do that. We intend to do that this fiscal year, and Gary's been in contact with the county already on that, so...
Is there money in the budget to cover those costs?
Think we can do that out of this year's budget. We don't think we need eighteen, nineteen money to do it. That's my point. So it's a, to me, it's a seventeen, eighteen. In terms of the second observation that you made, same answer.
The B-three survey?
The B-three survey, that's part of what we intend to do, as part of now. I agree with you. When you said it's beyond paint, that's why...
It's a good policy tool. I mean, you've got to know what the businesses need or where they're at.
That's one of the things that our person that's in that role right now, Bill Giulio, is out starting, is just engaging to let them know that we're there. And then the B-three tool comes in behind that. That's how we view that.
I think the county has that tool, and we would probably be willing to share it on a regional basis.
We agree with that, too. And then, see why I needed to have you stop at three because I can't remember three? But you do, right? So what three was?
I mentioned sufficient advertising marketing money to do...
IEDC.
IEDC for the data standards that are recognized and also creating maybe some quantitative marketing brochures for our targeted industries. Something you want to look at.
That we might need to do a budget amendment for. Because that one, we didn't explicitly have. We were looking at quantitative marketing for the sites. But Gary and I hadn't done the IEDC connection. That's a good suggestion. So that's his homework assignment is to figure out how much that needs to be amended on the eighteen, nineteen recommended budget. So now we're caught up with the first three. Keep going.
Okay, thank you. On the key fiscal year objectives, we're talking about the creation of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategic Plan. We'll include all community input, Arizona Town Hall recommendations, and council priorities. I'd also like to add or make sure that we include all past plans and studies. The city of Kingman had an economic development strategic plan back in two thousand and six, seven, eight, somewhere around there. I'd like to make sure that the general plan is included in that. And hopefully, if we can include a downtown sub-plan within that plan, I think that would be a good idea, too.
Okay, so two things on that. The first one, and Gary can check with the vendor on this, but I think that as part of their environmental scan, they did what you just suggested about previous documents. I think they already did that, planned to do that. The downtown plan as a subset of that, I don't think is in their current scope. Gary can check with them to see if I'm right on that or if they'd be willing to fold that in as a subset.
And the other reason I suggested that be a subset is because downtown is absolutely critical to Kingman's economic development, and it also is critical to tourism, a lot of different levels and layers there, so...
I get that. So...
Just a few more things.
I know. That's what I figured. That's why I stopped at five.
So, let's see, develop and implement a business retention and expansion program in conjunction with the Kingman Chamber of Commerce. That's the only organization that is mentioned, and I have a problem with that. I think we need to make sure that CAMA is involved with that. We need to make sure that the Mohave Small Business Administration is involved with that. Need to make sure that the WAVE, J-TED is involved in that. Need to make sure the NCC is involved with that. Need to make sure that Arizona Commerce Authority is probably involved with that. They're probably not going to be really involved because we're rural and they don't have a big rural emphasis, but all the other players, industry, education, J-TED, Mohave SBA, in addition to just the Chamber, they need to be involved with that process. When you're talking about business expansion and retention, the Chamber doesn't hire anybody, but CAMA does.
No, I get, okay. So, if you're talking about developing the strategy itself...
I'm just reading what's written.
What you read, write to that. If you're, if when you read that, it means the development of the strategy, right, then I would agree with the supplemental list you gave, if you will. What we were thinking when that was written was that the entity that would be helping us execute the strategy would be the Chamber.
Still needs to be broader, in my opinion.
And so, and so, that's why you read that, and that's why we had the conversation.
Thank you for the clarification. I still think that...
So I just wanted, I wanted to differentiate, all I was trying to, Travis, was differentiate between the development of the strategy and the execution of the strategy. And when we wrote that particular line, we were thinking about the executors of the strategy rather than the development, so...
Chamber is certainly a player, but they're not the only player. We need to make sure that CAMA and all the other entities are involved with that.
I just, I'm looking at Gary. Did you get the list of...
So I said CAMA, I said the Mohave SBA, I said J-TEN, MCC.
I just want to make sure that we've got...
We've met all, we've already met with all those folks now. And we had a meeting with CAMA, too, so we're, we are progressing on that basis, yes.
I think we just want to make sure it's acknowledged here in the...
Yeah, I do.
Continue.
And then the last bullet point I just want to touch on as well, if we could, support the development and expansion of targeted industry clusters, especially manufacturing and healthcare. So I assume that, I mean, we have targeted industry clusters that are identified in our general plan twenty thirty right now. I assume those are going to be updated as a part of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategic Plan.
I do, too.
So, those are obviously going to be broader than just manufacturing and healthcare, so I'd hope that...
And so, to that point, I mean, tourism is one of those currently identified. And Josh is sitting here as, if you will, the representative of the targeted industry cluster called tourism.
Yes.
So, the language is to... Excuse me. Is to make sure that we have staff connectivity to every one of the targeted clusters. Is that right? So, I want to make sure we had it for manufacturing, want to make sure we had it for healthcare, want to make sure we have it for tourism. You go right down the list. And so, it doesn't have to, to me, doesn't have to be the same person doing all of that. And so that's the only point I was trying to make. I count Josh as part of the team on targeted industry clusters, except he's as tourism, not manufacturing, healthcare. I want somebody who is well-versed in manufacturing particularly to deal with that cluster. And I absolutely agree with your last point that goes back to the night we did the economic development presentation, which is that we need to make sure we're clear on what the targeted industry clusters are the city is supporting. And I would expect, as you suggested, that that's one of the things that comes out of the strategic plan.
Yeah. I'm hoping that there's an emphasis on base wage industries that are, you know, companies that are exploring products and services and employing new money. That's different than healthcare. Can I just have one more, actually, two more comments? Can I have one comment on tourism and one on the airport? So tourism, the last bullet point on the fiscal year objectives is expand the Art in Public Places program. I'd like to make sure that we have a work session arriving on that. The council was not involved in the initial public place, Art in Public Places program. So we need to have that discussion. We need to talk about maybe a one percent for public art program. There's other types of ways to incorporate public art into what the city does. So I'd like to make sure that we have that work session.
And then, are you going to go to the airport next?
Airport's right now. I want to make sure that we have some sort of funding to start on the master planning phase two of the airport industrial park.
The airport authority, a month ago, two months ago, recently, entered into a contract for a master plan update, significant contract, it's like five-hundred thousand dollars.
That's incorporated into our budget, no?
It's, we're going to inherit it, okay? And it's ninety, ten money, which means the local government is responsible for fifty thousand, and then Joe Husband is following up to see if maybe some of that fifty can be picked up by another party. So, that's the first fact that I know. The thing that I don't know is what the scope is. I'm presuming that it includes the industrial park part as well as the airport itself because that was the worldview, if you will, of the previous management out there, is that that was all one facility. So we will double-check to make sure that it includes the part of it.
The reason I bring that up is now that the city has direct control of that asset, I believe in phase one, there's only about a hundred something acres left. I could be wrong. Is there, as far as available land?
Yeah. I mean, they're a little over that. It's looking at that next fifteen hundred.
A little over, a little over a hundred acres. You know, in my opinion, that's past the time when we should have started to master plan phase two for future industry and growth for our community. So we'll make sure that we tackle that this, next year.
So we'll make sure we know what the scope is of the contract that KAA executed.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Other, I was surprised to see you...
So the first thing I have, which you don't have, on my list that I want, that I think is imperative, that's included in our economic development budget, is a comprehensive marketing plan that would be citywide, that it would include branding of the city. We really need a cohesive look to all of our marketing. We see in a lot of our budgets in different departments, there's money for marketing, and everybody goes their separate ways. And so when you look at marketing collateral from the city, it, you can't recognize right away this is a city piece. They're all different. So I would like to see the website. Excuse me, I wrote this down. Marketing, a cohesive city marketing plan that would include tourism parks, the website, our airport, as well as the marketing that we use to bring in new industry to our city. And I think that we would greatly benefit from putting, you know, getting an RFP out so that we can have professional marketing companies provide that for our city so that we have a really clean look to everything that we're putting out. And like I said, that'd be whether it's for a family fun night for our parks or to start bringing in new employers at the industrial park. So I would like to see that number added. I know you're trying to, you thought I was going to talk longer.
Does that include community branding?
What's that?
Does that include community branding?
Yeah, it would.
Right. Branding the city and then using that so that we have a really nice, clean, cohesive look to everything that we put out.
So that's Gary's second assignment, homework assignment. I would have, I would agree with all the things you said about content. I wouldn't have thought of it as being driven by economic development. I would have seen it coordinated, but I suspect that Ron would see it as economic development-driven based on what you said. And so that's why it becomes a homework assignment for Gary. And we'll try to let you know.
So, I said... Sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to catch up as...
No, that's all right. Same approach we've talked about through the morning, which is, we tell you what the number is, gets folded into the preliminary, and then you can keep or delete.
My second item I would like to ask for, I'd like to see another employee added to the economic development department. This is the one that you and I have discussed at great length. And here's why. So in January of two thousand and seventeen, this council came together to do a priorities list in a retreat type of a meeting. And every single one of us agreed on downtown as being a priority for this council. However, since that time, we have not, as a city, done anything to really invest in or assist with downtown revitalization. We have been supporting the rebirth of our Main Street program, but aside from volunteer hours, we haven't done anything. And in nineteen eighty-six, the city of Kingman adopted the Main Street program as a way of supporting downtown. So what I am asking for today is an employee under economic development that would be assigned specifically to downtown to be a coordinator. We have an employee that oversees tourism. We have somebody that is in charge of the airport, and we need to have somebody that's in charge of supporting downtown. I strongly believe that Main Street is the vehicle to guide this person. As you guys know, I was just at the annual conference, and the majority of the people attending the conference were Main Street coordinators. Main Street has a four-point approach that has been used for over forty years that has been successful, and I believe that the four points are right in line with everything that we want to do with downtown, and that would be economic development, historic preservation, marketing and events, and beautification. And so with that, I just want to say that, you know, the downtown business owners are doing a fantastic job, as we saw with First Friday, this last First Friday, the streets were packed. Several of the businesses have said that that was their best sales for the last twelve months was in that one night during First Friday. But as the event grows bigger and bigger, it is becoming just too much for these business owners to put it together on their own. So my concern is that if the city doesn't step up in a leadership type of role and help with marketing and inventing, that we're going to see that First Friday end. We also are missing opportunities to apply for Main Street grants. I often see both small and large grants coming up through the Main Street program. We don't have anyone assigned to, and we don't have any volunteers that are grant writers that can help us with that. We have a lot of empty storefronts downtown, which are future potential to bring in tax dollars. And then the last thing is, is that the historic preservation commission has already approved a facade program. They're very close to approving a landmark program. We don't have anyone that can oversee those programs and actually bring them to fruition. So there are a lot of people doing work to help downtown, but as a city, I believe it's time that we step up and we create an economic development person that would help see these programs through so that we can really give a boost to our downtown because we know that this is the heart of our city. We know that there's a lot of potential there, and it's really time that we either step up or we just give up and let it go. So that's my speech that I've prepared. Thank you.
That was very good.
Thank you.
And so Jamie can probably also do what I'm going to say because she and I have had this conversation for a while. Gary and Ron and I agree about the need for the city to be a supportive, play a supportive role in downtown. We're same place. And First Friday, to me, is a good example of how, you know, we've demonstrated that. In the economic development portion of this department's budget, there's a... In the economic development portion of this department's budget, there's a, as I said earlier, there's a position called neighborhood development specialist. That's who we see as the resource to help with downtown. And, and the things that are, that Jamie identified in terms of grants, and for that matter, helping them to create a 501(c)(3) organization for a platform. We think that those resources are in place. How they perform is a different question. And, um, and that becomes a responsibility of, of the department director, Gary and the manager, who's Ron, gonna be Ron on the Wednesday morning. But we, we think we've resourced the concerns that, that Jamie identified. And, um, and so that's, that's why she and I haven't been able to come to an agreement about whether or not to have this budget include another position that she, that she just outlined. And that's pretty much where, where the, the two viewpoints are. We agree on what we're trying to do. We just don't have an agreement about how that's gonna work out. The, the last thing I would say, and I, and, uh, and I think Jamie and I agree on this, is I, there's an item on a, one of your June work sessions, I think it's the 19th, or downtown is gonna be talked about. I think, I think having that, uh, is important. Frankly, if I reviewed the last five months here, I should've done it earlier than, than June. So that all the things that, uh, have been identified in terms of where the city commitment is become matters of record to say, this is what we're doing. And, um, and I think that's another way we can help is to, is to provide some clarity about the fact that the city does have a stake in this. And so Travis wants to add a comment or ask a question.
I wanted to ask a question. Uh, for the position that you described, does the job description for that position exist? And if so, does it specify the types of things that, um, that we've discussed here?
I, to my knowledge, the position description has not been formally crafted 'cause this is a recommended budget item. But in terms of the content, for what Jamie said, the answer is yes.
I think it's important that we, that we see that, that we have it, because if you're gonna measure performance against it, we have to see what the expectation is. And then I think we could satisfy some of these concerns that we all share, truly.
Yeah, that's a fair, that's a fair suggestion.
And the job.
Travis, go ahead.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
On top of that, can you tell us right now that that employee has room in their day-to-day to do all of the things that need to be done specifically for downtown? Because I think they oversee all of the neighborhoods right now and I don't know that, I mean, I just wanna, that's fine. We don't add another person if that person that's already there can do all the things that need to happen with downtown. And in which case, we'd wanna turn all this over to them now and get them.
Well, I think that, yeah, I, the, the reality is, we don't have as much happening in the neighborhoods not called downtown as we do in downtown. So, so this person's activities are more about downtown than they are anything else. So I, I would say, yeah, I think that, as I understand the workflow down there, I think, I think the answer to your question is, yeah, they do. We do have that resourced adequately in terms of being able to provide that support. It's not dedicated, and that's one of the things you and I've talked about. And, um, and as, as we go forward, you know, with this list of things, we might wind up, uh, rethinking how we do the, the support for, for downtown. But for, for right now, for the list of things that I, I have come to understand that are important, I, my short answer is, yes, we are. Travis?
Um, I appreciate what you've just said. I still think that that solution is kind of trying to push a square peg through a round hole, repurposing. Um, the position that I think that Jamie is describing comes with a specific skill set and training that I don't think that this individual has. So I would like to see in this next fiscal year budget, a Main Street program manager, a real Main Street program manager. And what I see them being responsible for is, um, grant writing, public realm improvements, you know, um, input on building and zoning codes downtown, emphasis on destination promotion, and emphasis on mixed-use promotion, things like that. Um, I don't think that unless you have a person with a specific skill set working downtown five days a week, eight hours a day, that we're gonna make a lot of progress. It's been kicked down the road since the 80s and it's 2018 now. We don't want to tell anybody what they are gonna do with their building. We don't want to get in any business owner's way. But I think that there's a real opportunity for the city to play first chair in the public realm and on building and zoning codes and on, uh, grant writing and that type of stuff. So I'd like to see a, a, a Main Street program coordinator or, or manager included in the fiscal year 1819 budget. Gary?
Um, I guess the question I would like to get clarified here is, you were talking that in terms, this would be a city employee. I, I think we're, we might be opening ourselves up for some problems here and that if anything goes wrong, then the finger comes, certainly points back at us at a city. How about the consideration if we were a major partner financially and you acquired as a Main Street your own manager, but, but it was part of our dues or whatever that would supplement that? So the control remained within Main Street, but not within the city. So you could do your accomplishments and we could provide that, that backup, whether it be in the grant area or whatever to assist that person. Is that, is, is that a feasible consideration?
That is one way to do it. Um, you and I have talked about that. That's not the most successful way to go about it because a city employee has more accountability. And, um, what I saw when I went to the conferences, a lot of the coordinators are employed, they're city employees. Uh, we have a lot of great volunteers right now, but there isn't anybody that has the amount of time or, um, the ability to, to go out and hire this person and, and keep it going. And, and that's the thing. We need to come in with support and leadership. Um, the, the city has kicked this can down the road for a long time. And I, I read an email, uh, it was a letter, it wasn't an email, it was a letter, 1991, where the Main Street group is asking, practically begging the city to please put some funding into this so that they could move the downtown forward. We've never really invested and we keep saying this is a priority, but, but then when it comes time to invest in downtown and, and actually making something happen, we don't. And I think the results speak for themselves of what, how downtown is always, um, you know, it picks up and then it drops off and it picks up and it drops off. How about, you know, we, we actually do something and we make downtown successful?
Let's just say, we're, we're, we're privileged in Kingman to be the county seat. And we are smack dab in the middle of the government services district of the county. We've got state offices here, county offices here, city offices here. And you got all these great, really intelligent, bright enthusiasm, you know, all the motivated business owners. But, you know, who plays first chair in the public realm? It's the city. Who plays first chair? I mean, do the business owners have grant writing experience? And a lot of them don't. Um, who has first chair on building and zoning code stuff? It's the city. I mean, all these things are, you know, stuff that somebody could work on every week as a job, one person, to push this thing down the road and, and it could motivate private investors to come in and do something with the buildings. So.
So, um, you understand, I think, that, um, the, the recommended budget says we don't need three people in planning. Says we only need two. So there's a recommended elimination of the senior planner position, right? And in its place, this neighborhood development position is created, right? And the assumption is that that person that was at senior planner position fills that, right? So if, if we go the direction of having a designated downtown person, right? I think you can understand why it would be easy to conclude that you're asking that we eliminate the senior planner. Because there's, there's.
You mean the neighborhood specialist?
Huh?
The neighborhood specialist's position.
We eliminate the senior, you'd eliminate the senior planner and the neighborhood development specialist, essentially because that's the work that downtown, it's the work that we intended for that position to do, right? So it's just, I mean, it's, it's part of the reason that the conversation with Jamie and I over the last couple of weeks have been, um, healthy between the two of us, but we can't get to exactly the same place. 'Cause I, I'm not, I, I hear the caveat about the ability to, to convert to that. But to me, that's, that's part of the, the management process to, to find out if that's true or not. And if, if that becomes the case, then the, as Jamie said about city positions in general, and the accountability starts with Ron and then goes to Gary to, to deal with that. But I just, um, just want to make sure we're all clear that, that, um, when we're looking at staff planners here, you know, the recommendation is two, not three. And so.
Manager bacon?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think I, I get it. I get the desire and the intent of this position, though it does need a description. I also know that we're in a state right now where there is a lot going on downtown that is in flux. And, I mean, I was just approached by one of the entities saying, we want this. And I saw it's one of our objectives, that bricks on 66 to, to do that, and they want it back. And there's just things that need to be dealt with. So not going to the level of a manager position, but staying with a coordinator type of position, is it within possibility? Could it be sufficient for the time being to bring in a part-time coordinator that would assist and we could find out where the, where the pieces fall as we move forward? Um, because there needs to be some pretty rapid assistance, I think, in some of these areas. Throwing that out as a consider, and also there's a, there's a link in this position, in my mind, with tourism. There's a link, you know, there, there's several programs that are operated there that are all downtown. So, um, I don't know how the descriptions look, but we need to probably start something, as somewhere, to get some dynamic input from the city into this mix.
It makes sense. I mean, we have a lot of services in here and the majority of the services that are in this book are paid for by a sales tax, right?
Right.
And this is a major generating sales tax area. So I think a position that was solely focused on growing that sales tax base downtown is gonna be paid for, by, it's gonna pay for itself.
What, what I'm asking for is an additional position that would be called a Main Street coordinator.
Yeah, that's, you, you and I are clear on that. I mean.
Right. I just want to know where everybody else stands. So I mean, I'd like to survey and see where everybody else stands on adding a downtown coordinator to support downtown business.
Do we know if other communities have this position? You mentioned some at the, at the.
They do. A lot. Hundreds, thousands. A lot.
A lot. Gary, Gary wanted to make a comment and I have something to say and we'll go.
Would, how do you visualize this individual taking direction from a formal board of Main Street Incorporated 501s? No, or just?
No. The way I see it is they, the program, the program is very strong. They would use that as their guide.
I'm familiar with the program.
Okay, and then we would go back, the volunteers would be just supporting, um, like, what we had started with after the town hall were volunteer groups that would work on placemaking, that would work on marketing. So those volunteer groups would just support the, the Main Street program and support downtown. But this person would be the leader, the administrator, and they would oversee all parts of, of Main Street.
If we did do this, one of the things that would really help from Main Street or any other, as you know, one of the challenges we have right now is many diverse groups.
Yes.
And, and, uh,
This I see as a way of bringing people together.
I don't see a magic answer there, unfortunately. And not that I've been around a long time, but from the meetings that I've attended it, I, I think that's, it's a heck of a challenge. And I, I certainly wouldn't want this person to have to face, you know, well, this group is pulling them this way and this group is pulling them this way. If we could just get everybody in sync, you know, I think, uh, then we really would have a, a successful shot at this, whatever way you all choose to go.
Right. I would think that a coordinator would be able to help with that. You know, one of the biggest problems, uh, I think this last First Friday is a great example, is just miscommunication between the different business owners and your business owners are juggling so many things right now between the events and their own business and fixing up downtown. So this, having one central person to put out communication and one clear message and then using Main Street as the vehicle to move forward, so everybody knows what to expect, um, how we plan on getting there. I think that will help bring people together so that we don't have these different factions. The idea is to support downtown. And I also think that the city finally, being a part and in, uh, of this program, will, um, show our downtown business owners that, that we're finally going to step up to the plate. And I believe that will help relations between the city and downtown business owners.
Maybe one other thing we, we might want to think about, and that is, you know, as, as we focus all this effort in the downtown, if, if I'm a merchant on Stockton Hill Road, you know, what's in it for me kind of thing? I mean, you know, just, it may be a sidebar that, you know, as we start to go through this, or if we went to this kind of step, what we might have to watch for, just to.
And I don't disagree with that, but if you look, um, you know, we have tourism represented. Well, other industries could say, how about me? You know, we have somebody out at the airport and industrial park. You could still say, how about me? I think that maybe your neighborhood services person, that would be their role, is to support the rest of the businesses. You know, my own business isn't located in downtown, but I do see the benefit from investing in certain areas when it comes to economic development and having specialists to oversee those areas.
But the chamber could offer that umbrella too, 'cause that really is a, a, an all Kingman umbrella, supposed to a specific areas.
So the, the, the thing I was gonna, uh, suggest before we go around is, I, what I hear from Travis is a job that, um, is different than what I hear from Jamie. And, um, Travis is, is, uh, it's almost borrowing the, the idea of, of targeted industry segment.
Tourism already is a targeted industry.
Huh?
Tourism already is a targeted industry.
Tourism is, but I'm talking about downtown, Travis, right? That says, we're gonna, we're looking for somebody to, to, um, find businesses that want to be downtown and work with them, put, put an economic development component in, right? That's really, I get that, I track that. And, and when I, when I talk to and listen to Jamie, it's much more about activity, events type thing.
I don't think, I don't think so. I'm talking about that's one piece of it.
That's what I hear. I'm just telling you that's what I hear.
But I think economic development, business development, filling those vacant shops, doing the facade program, doing the landmark program, uh, helping out with beautification, historic preservation. We have missed the boat on historic preservation for many years. A lot of our historic properties are not being added to the register. There's a, there's a lot of work to be done and we, we have, this is just another area that's been neglected and I believe it is a full-time job to take on all of this.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're already right now spending money to put an arch over Beale Street to bring people into our downtown. Um, with respect to the businesses on, in other areas of town, Stockton Hill Road will never be a destination. Downtown is a destination, where, at least we want it to be a destination. I think that's what we're kind of striving for, is for downtown to be a destination. And that's, to go back to, how do you bring all these groups together? I mean, that is a legitimate challenge and, and kind of the reason why I thought maybe in our economic development strategic plan, our comprehensive strategic plan, we have a downtown subset plan. And you take, you know, you got the Kingman downtown merchants, they're pushing the Cook Plan, and you got this group that wants to do this. And you, you incorporate that all into this analysis that goes into this economic development plan. And at the end of it, you, you have this, this downtown sub-plan and it has projects and tasks and who's responsible. And at the end of it, you, you have this, this downtown sub-plan and it has projects and tasks and who's responsible. And, and that's your one sheet of music that everybody then from that point forward reads, reads and goes, goes forward with.
So why do I hear that as an argument to not do what Jamie suggested for eighteen, nineteen, but to do it for nineteen, twenty based on what the plan says?
Well, I think there's still room right now for a, a full-time person that works on, I mean, the day one, they could start in with grant funds, you know, writing a ton of grants to try to get monies to get things started down here.
So.
And I, and I think that there's money in this right now, um, for some beautification downtown. I think that I saw that in one of the funded, it was one of the funded things that we were going to do, like six or seven, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars of downtown beautification or something like that. Maybe, we'll get to it later in the day.
Okay, I have a question too, because just getting realistic about what, what has been done? And, and this, this position that is now a neighborhood, whatever.
Right.
This position historically has written grants or as the planner, I guess that, I assume that's what's in the, uh.
That's part of why it made sense to, to do it.
C D G, um, historic preservation type grants, those types of things would be integrated still in the neighborhood position. So, um, I go back to Jamie's point, which was, uh, could this, is there enough time in the day to expand what that position is currently doing to address all these different types of grants and programs? I know that we've also got a program going, or we've talked about for years, the revolving loan programs for facades and other types of improvements downtown. We want to talk about streetscaping and a lot of things that are going to be really important downtown. So I think it's fair to ask, how much can this existing position assume? Or is there enough overflow that it could, that it could hit the ground running with another job description that kind of, it's a lot, I know. And you think, I hear you, you think this position is intended to do all of this.
Well, largely because, as you said, the, the types of things that we're looking at for downtown are things this person has been responsible for historically.
But there's so many things now that we're talking about that.
No, we're talking about the ability to go out and execute, really. And then to me, that's what this is, the conversation about is to make the commitments. If we're interested in having.
Be a part of the economic development.
Having city support, Main Street.
As well as being titled.
Main Street USA. This is, yeah, this is.
Their job description, like, or I mean, their title. It's at Neighborhood Services.
She, she, she being Jamie, okay? Jamie wants, Jamie, it's just crystal on this. Jamie wants the city to do two things. Affirm the declaration that Main Street is our vehicle of choice for downtown. And two, to implement what I call the national model of having a coordinator hired using city funds. And to her, it's easier to have it done through the city structure than it is to have it done through a Main Street structure where, which is Gary's suggestion, where you have the money. The, the city writes a check to, to the entity and then they, they take care of the, the position. So that's, that's pretty much, got it right? So, um, go around the table. I, I know where Jamie is, uh, which would be, just so we're clear about what the question is.
I have, I have another thing to show on the table. Is there any, uh, possibility of looking at this as a pilot? A pilot position to see if that is effective and worthy to continue a year or two years?
The only problem with pilots is, is you, boy, I think once you commit, I mean, maybe you just need to commit one way or the other because I just worry that a pilot, you go along and, and you'll be in that situation a year from now. You know, it's almost working and then people get torn a little bit. I, I, I don't know. To me, it's just that if we commit, we commit, you know?
I guess it's probation.
You know, I, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I'm going to put him on the spot because Mr. Foggan's going to be the one that implements.
Yeah, exactly.
So, and I know he has a lot of downtown experience. So, um, it was one of his strengths. I'd like to know what his thoughts are on this topic.
Well, we, we discussed this with, with a few of you. And, um, yeah. I, I think that the proposal, uh, that's been laid out in the budget gets you, gets you down the path. I think the evaluation, I've heard snippets of, well, what about a part-time person? Did you get the job description right? I, I think the evaluation has to come after you've, you've put some, some skin in the game. Uh, you know, there's something to be said about jumping into that cold, the cold swimming pool. Just don't dip your toe in, just, just don't jump in and your breath may come back to you. But I, I, I think that, uh, the, the correct job description and having a person that is, is working on, um, putting the downtown things in place, grant writing, facade, signage, historical building, that all belongs to the building owners anyway. It's just encouraging them to, to go through the process. I, I've watched some really super successful downtowns and I've watched some that aren't super successful. And, uh, it, it wasn't, it wasn't based on, on the employee, whether it was an employee of the downtown association or a city employee. And there's a mix. I mean, let's be clear. And you're not, I don't believe that we're going to find, that you're going to put this job description out if you just go to a downtown, uh, manager. Most downtown managers are young people that have just graduated with a four-year degree, usually in planning, urban, urban planning, something like that. And they find themselves in, uh, in a position where I, I, I asked Gary and Jim if they had the RARE program here. That's really where most of these Main Street folks come from, is through the RARE program. Uh, I don't know if, if Arizona has that. It's usually run through one of the universities. And, and what happens is the, the RARE person, uh, is a grant program that works for a community for eleven months. They, the, the grant program, it's through AmeriCorps. But I think what, what Jim and Gary have outlined for you with, um, stepping into this program with, with an employee that is, got dedicated time, gives you the ability to, to evaluate at the end, next year's budget process, whether that really worked or didn't work. That's, that's where I see this is, you know, can, can we make headway with this position that's already in the budget? It's, I support either way and I've, I've watched both models be successful. I, I've heard Main Street experts say that, and I think I told Jamie this, is that I, I've sat through a number of Main Street, uh, presentations where I've had Main Street experts tell me, tell the crowd, the group, that the, when the city hires the employee, there are problems, as, as Gary has pointed out. And, and there's some, there's some facts to that. Um, and that's why a lot of times you see the downtown association with their board and, you know, a, a setup board is the per, is the group that manages this employee, where the city then can, is a, is a big contributor to the, to their salary, really. And so they don't feel like they have a hundred different bosses. Uh, because that's, that is a recipe for, for disaster for an employee. So, um, but I, I think you've got the steps in place in the budget to go, to start down the path. If it has to be, I, I haven't looked at the numbers, so I, you know, my, my, if I was, if we were fast forward to next year and we were having the same conversation, the question is, okay, this is what the council wants. What do we, what, what do we cut out of the budget to make this happen? That's gotta be, that's gotta be part of the conversation. You can't spend the money twice and, and I honestly, I can't speak for Tina or Jim, they're the ones that prepare the budget. But generally, if you want to change the budget, uh, at least the budget, the budgets that I bring to the council, there's not a lot of, there, there's no fluff in it. So I just say, oh yeah, we'll just add this position and no harm, no foul. These type, these type of decisions are hard because it's, okay, is it going to cost you a firefighter? Is it going to cost you a parks employee? Uh, there's a reason why Jim led off this budget presentation yesterday by saying that seventeen point five employees are more than he and I together have ever recommended in a ten, in a ten-year span. Uh, because it just, it's a lot, that's a lot of employees. And once you, once you have those employees, as a manager, you plan on having those employees for, forever. And, um, so, um, that, that's my two cents.
I have another question. Thank you. That was, that was very helpful. And, uh, I go back to, uh, this position change. Is the real nature of the, the duties going to reflect? Is it going to parallel the Main Street? Is that the intent?
Oh, yes.
So it's really a different job description than the one that has been? So I'm, I'm still trying to understand what we're giving up so that these new things can be.
So Bill, the, the senior planner, right? Position has been a part of the planning shop for a while.
Right. And now it's down to the best of things.
So the first thing you do is you, you, you have planning operating with two positions, not three. That's the, so.
Right.
People would look at that as a give-up, okay? My answer to that is because we're going to contract most of the planning exercises beyond what they do routinely on land use anyway. And we've talked about three of those already this morning. So I'm comfortable with that trade-off. So then you go into the neighborhood services piece. And because the individual that we're talking about has the experience in the area, a number of the areas we've talked about, to me, it's worth finding out if that person can deliver for the downtown what we expect that position to deliver. And if that person can't, it's a performance problem, it's not a resource problem. And so, so that's, that's how I view it. It's, um, I don't have anything else to say. Except that Dave needs to tell me what he's thinking.
Me?
Yeah, you.
Um, I did have, uh, maybe one more question for Ron. Um, and, and just as a caveat, I, I feel I'm learning a lot of this, all of it basically right now. So it's kind of hard, it's kind of a hard spot for me because I don't, I mean, I, I, I trust, you know, Jamie. I think she, you know, she went to this downtown thing and, and learned from, from all those people and found all these different positions and sees that a lot of cities have this position. Uh, one question that I had for Ron, um, do you think that adding, uh, a Main Street manager, a coordinator, would increase city revenue over, I mean, would it pay for itself? Would it increase city money over the years this?
Uh, fingers crossed. It, it depends on the economy. It depends on what your mood, your, your building owners are. Uh, you know, the, the success of, the, the success of your downtown is, is really tied to the strength of the businesses that are there, the quality of the business, the quality of the buildings that are there. You know, the streetscape, landscaping, the stuff that makes your, your downtown enjoyable, you know? Is it nice to walk? Does it invite pedestrians? Are there places to sit? Are there trees? Are, you know, all those things go into making your downtown, uh, successful. And having, having a downtown coordinator or manager, making sure that if you're going to have flower pots, if, if one of, you know, one of the things in, in the downtown is do your businesses put out, uh, you know, vegetation? You know, does, what does it look like? Is there a standard? Just, just coordinating those things that are, that make a downtown inviteable to, to people to come visit. And I, there's no guarantee that this person is gonna, is gonna make, gonna fill one store. The hope is that not only are the, all the storefronts filled, but, um, that they're, they're with unique and great businesses that, that people want to come and visit. You think, I mean, think, think about the successful Main Streets that you've, that you've visited. What, what, why was it successful? What, what in your opinion made it successful or looks successful? Or why did you want to go there? And that's, that's the, the elements you, we want to take and bring to, to Kingman, right? That's, you know, flat, hanging flower pots and, you know.
I, I know you didn't ask me, but I can't resist.
I was gonna ask.
Piggybacking things.
I mean, you are a person with the community as it is.
You know, I think what Jamie said a long time ago in this conversation about First Friday is the, is the answer to, to your question about economic impact. You know, it's, it's having, it's having a downtown that more people see as a destination because there's something to do down there. In our case, down here, because we're already here. Uh, and that while they're, they're, they're going to, uh, become customers of, of businesses as used to stay open. You know, I think what Ron was suggesting, actually had experience with this in, in another community I managed. City went to a lot of work to, to promote downtown and they had a three-day festivals, killer festival. It's like First Friday on steroids. It was a great deal. And the business owners in the downtown closed out. And, and one of our elected officials went to them and said, why'd you do that? And they said, well, there's just too many people out there. Well, that's the point, right? And so, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the direct connectivity that, that your question suggested between this position and economic gain. I mean, I, it'd be nice to, to get that. But the kinds of things that Jamie and I have talked about for five months are about economic vitality, which is different than saying, oh, okay. This, this, since this position was hired, sales tax revenues in the downtown went up eight point two percent. Therefore, it's a success. Or if it only went up four point three percent, it's a failure. I mean, I don't, I just don't think you want to use that calibration on, on what we're talking about. Because it's, it, it's about vibrancy more than it is about the, the traditional economic metrics.
I think that, um, one of the concerns or fears is that, you know, uh, we don't want to lose momentum. There's been a, like a, a big surge in downtown activity recently and, um, I'd hate to, you know, cut into that. Is, is there any compelling, uh, reason why we, why one might recommend us an additional city planner over this other position? I mean, is that, is that the trade-off? Is we're gonna, we're looking at either adding a city planner or this particular position?
No, no, we're not talking about that at all. That's, I'm comfortable with two is the number for the planning staff. The quick, and, and Jamie introduced this idea of saying, I'd like to add a position. I mean, it would be fair to, to the person making the request. The request was to add a position called Main Street Coordinator, right?
Yes.
Right. And so to her, it's an add. I'm the guy who said, as I have understood the conversation that she and I've had over the last month, actually, on this. You know, what I envisioned that job doing matches overlaps, your, your choice of words with what we have in the budget as a neighborhood services. matches overlaps, your, your choice of words with what we have in the budget as a neighborhood services, neighborhood development person. And so if we were going to put the main, the Main Street Coordinator position in, it would be difficult for me to explain why we're still keeping the neighborhood development.
Why don't we change the name of the neighborhood development specialist to Main Street Coordinator? I mean, if that really is.
If they're that closely tied.
If you wanted.
If that really is the job description.
If you want to do that, you know, I, that.
There's a six month probation period.
That, that works for me.
Try not to put a face on this position, but if I understand that there's a six month probation.
That's.
Switch positions.
That's.
Is that right?
Um.
Is this the main?
I was, I was trying to, I, I long ago gave up trying to keep today on schedule like we did yesterday. Uh, because the conversations have been really good on, on both parking rec and, and economic development. So I was trying to go around the table and get an idea where we're at. Jamie's suggestion, what started this conversation was that we add a position to the Economic Development Department called Main Street Coordinator. And what we just heard from Vice Mayor Miles was maybe we, instead of doing that, we retitle the Neighborhood Development Specialist, since it's a new job anyway. We, we call it Main Street Coordinator and do it that way. So.
I'm inclined to go with.
You with the Vice Mayor on this one?
Miles, if that's, I mean, if the job description is the same or, or substantially similar.
Okay. So that's stupid.
I don't see it titled or, uh, as such. If anything, I would see such a position being generally an assistant to the Economic Development Director for the purpose of grant seeking, um, potential attendance at ICSC and other events, um, but not focused solely on trying to get a few storefronts filled in a, not that I am not extremely supportive and, um, big proponent of downtown, I am, but focused on a four or five square block area. Um, I think that the storefronts will fill themselves. I don't know what the, and, and if such a position, uh, you know, you, you title it and you describe it as such, if they are successful, very successful in that position, they work themselves out of a job in two, three years as downtown is, becomes what we want to see it become. Which is why I think it needs to be an assistant to the Economic Development Director, not, not a Main Street or a downtown, uh, focused, um, position. But maybe more of a citywide focused one or more of an economic development assistant. Um, you know, and address other issues as well.
Thank you. Um, I think that, that the job title is semantics and it's more about the skill set of the individual that is in the position and the position, the individual that would fill whatever the position is called. I don't know if I have confidence that they have the right skill set that we need. Um, the Main Street program approach was identified in our Kingman General Plan 2030 and 2014. It's 2018. We haven't done anything in four years to move forward on that goal that was voted on by the voters. Um, there's a lot of foundational to, work to do down here. And I think that it would warrant a full-time position to do that foundation work. Um, to, to focus on public realm improvements, absolutely focus on grant writing, improve, grant writing and getting money. That's a foundational thing to get something started. Um, you know, looking at building and zoning codes downtown, which have to be a little bit different because of the age of a lot of the buildings down here. And you go to other downtowns, you mentioned going to the downtowns. I've been to downtown Durango, I've been to downtown Mesa, I've been to a lot of downtowns. They have a lot of mixed use buildings, live, work, play stuff. And that's not promoted down here right now. I don't even know if it's really allowable. Do they have to go through some special zoning thing to do it? I mean, it's a headache. Uh, they could work on that. They could work on destination promotion, different strategies. I mean, right now, uh, we've got the First Friday thing and that's great. But that's only a part of, of promoting a destination. So I think unless we really create a position with a specific skill set, with a specific educational requirement, um, and we just say, let's throw somebody into a position and call it this and let's hope for the best and maybe it'll work out, maybe it won't. That doesn't really set us up for success. And I don't really feel it's comfortable, I'm not comfortable with expending resources on like a chance like that. You know, I want to set up the city up for, um, a better chance of success. So I would want to see a Main Street Coordinator passed to downtown.
Mr. Bacon, can I just make one comment? As we're discussing this, we need to focus on the position and not consider anything other than the position itself. Um, we need to, employment decisions are all based under the city manager. And it's not, and I'm not trying to point to anybody, but we need to direct that to, to position, not who may or may not be filling that position.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I would just say I would advocate funding a Main Street Coordinator in this next question.
Yeah. And that wasn't directed specifically at you, Travis. There was a lot of conversation just going a little too far. Thank you.
Okay. I am, uh, I'm not comfortable with this, uh, new, designating a new lending for a new position. But one thing, I haven't seen any job descriptions. But I go back to what Mr. Kellogg said, which is, and I don't care for the name of this position, so I mean, I'm very comfortable. It's not semantics to me. A title has specific things under it that are intended to be aligned with that title. What I heard you say was the Main Street program duties are going to be incorporated in this job. Was that correct?
They would have to be.
They would have to be.
Yes.
And so I think that, I don't like the nebulous neighborhood specialist. I'd rather have dedicated, we have dedicated for the airport, we have dedicated for other things. Why not dedicate one for an area that we really want it and need it? Call it that, design the job description that way and then make sure that the skill sets match. That's how I feel.
Vicky.
So I just, I have a question then. Are, are you, um, in favor of having someone dedicated to downtown? Or, and would that be an add or?
No.
It would be a change, it would be a change in this.
It's a change order.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it, it would be, it, it. What I heard Vice Mayor say, Vicky, was that she would be in favor of having the position designated for downtown. So the title would change, but the position description would clearly be about all the things we've talked about this morning. And, and therefore the number of positions would be identical to what we have in the budget recommendations. That's what I heard. Is that, did I hear that correct?
Uh, I think changing the name to anything with Main Street, but then having that individual still responsible for much more than that is, would, would be misleading. I, I would like to continue with Neighborhood Development Specialist, but with the opportunity for council, a council level review, not a staff review, but a council level review in six months to see where we are with Main Street objectives as well as all of the rest of what's going to be in this job description.
So what I think I've heard around the table is that, um, there is interest in keeping the total positions in this shop the same. But that's, I mean, it's, it's a good range. But to, um, redraft the currently titled Neighborhood Development Specialist position. So it is clearly about supporting downtown. That's what I heard.
And is that specifically a Main Street Coordinator?
And, and unless I hear a suggested alternative, right? The title, I would expect that's what they call it. Because that's what I heard from people going around. The, the challenge, which is Vicky's point, the, the challenge to that is to allow that that position to have, um, the ability to do things other than Main Street in terms of grants. And so, which I don't think is an issue for you. But if it is, let me know. But I, I, um, I think that the thrust of what I heard was that this is about, there's a, um, an interest in having the position identified as about downtown. And we can write into the, uh, position description the old famous other duties as assigned, the ability to do things beyond Main Street. So that's what I heard. I also could see that it's twenty to twelve and I only missed our first break by an hour. So, um, why don't we, uh, take a break for like ten minutes, fifteen minutes at, at the, at the top? And then we'll try to get the rest of the, uh, operating budgets done and spend some time on the cap.
Thank you.
Going to take their seats on the left side of me and Travis is on the right side of me as I talk to you about the city clerk's budget, which is on page one thirty-one to one thirty-three. And and so since I want to talk about the city clerk's budget. Trying to slow me out. I want to make sure that we're done with economic development and I think we are. So I can say thank you to Josh and Gary and Josh, you were articulate as anything today. So thank you for joining us. And so on the clerk's budget, the increase is about forty-nine thousand dollars. And the biggest reason for that is election expenses, which happen every other year. And this is one of those expenses that you don't get the average out. It's a little number and a big number. And so that's the story. And any questions for our city clerk? Before she goes back to her normal position here in this meeting today.
Nope. That is enough.
There you go. Thank you very much.
No controversy.
The next one is supposed to be human resources. And if she's not out there, then I know where I'm going next. Have a seat, ladies. So thank you for your patience, number one. I think everybody knows Jackie and hopefully they know Krista as well, who joins her today. The HR budget increase is five point three percent or thirty-three thousand dollars. And the big things in that increase are the applicant traffic tracking software, which is twenty and thirty thousand five hundred to hire a firm to help in the development and communication of a new pay plan. And the internal service charges were reallocated as they are every year. And that picked up another twenty-four thousand to offset. So we run two budgets for HR because Jackie serves as both your HR director and as your risk manager. And so that's why you have two pages there. And the risk budget increases by sixteen thousand in physician services. And that's because public safety employees need physicals if we're going to hire them. And you heard yesterday that we intend to hire about a half a dozen of those people. So that's the explanation for that. I want to come back to the thirty thousand five hundred for the professional compensation. I think this is one of the most important tasks that are laid out in the budget for twenty nineteen. I know Ron will be interested in being involved with that. As with Jackie and Krista and whoever receives this compensation plan award. As I said yesterday, I think one of the new realities for the city of Kingman from an economic standpoint is that we have a, in my view, a emerging three tiered market. One for entry level employees and say two, maybe the two-ten, two-eleven on the pay plan. And then one for public safety employees. You heard yesterday about how the market is getting more complicated. And then the third one is that probably the most challenging to me is it's the employees who do a really good job for us, have good skills and would like to be a part of the city organization, but are also attractive to employers elsewhere in Mojave County and Kingman itself, for that matter. And so finding a way to balance all that, put together a pay plan that not only makes sense, but also is one that we can support year after year after year is a really important thing. So I think I just gave Jackie and Krista's presentations. So if there are any questions of these two ladies or myself, that would be a good time to ask them.
I've got a couple of questions. Temporary salaries. You didn't use nearly that much money this year and you're budgeting the same as last year?
So on temporary salaries, the individual, we just have one part-time position. And so when they're not in the work environment, we're not paying them. And so this individual sometimes will take three weeks to a month off at a time. And so there's no, we don't compensate. But we plan on, you know, when we build the budget, we plan on them being there, you know, at least nineteen hours a week.
Okay. Succession planning and promotion, can you talk about that?
Sure, that's our tuition reimbursement, our assistance program. And so I do have some folks lined up in the pipeline this next year and I have some that completed their degrees this last year, so.
Software maintenance for twenty thousand?
If that is the succession plan or the applicant tracking system, that currently is in the finance budget. It's bundled with the payroll contract. And as we move to munis and do away with our current vendor, that will have to become unbundled. And so it's basically transferring it to our budget.
Is that the maintenance for that application or is it the purchase of the software?
It's the actual software.
And there'll be ongoing maintenance expenses?
Our IT team, since that'll be an in-house application now, will be maintaining that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Other questions for these two nice ladies? You were eloquent today, Krista. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See if Joe's out there. Good afternoon, Joe. IT budget is on pages one forty-seven to one forty-nine. And the thing to highlight in Joe's budget is the increase in the cost for data lines. And he's also asked for a twenty-five thousand dollar increase in a small computer equipment by cost. And so that's what changes are represented there. The budget, as you can tell, is essentially unchanged from eighteen to the recommendation for twenty nineteen. And the most important thing to me in this budget isn't in this budget per se. And the same thing to Ron and that's is we're waiting for the new website to get up. And so that's, he's been working on that this year. So any questions for Joe about IT?
I have one.
Sure.
Software maintenance services. Is that all the applications that the city is responsible for?
It is. It is, yeah. That's the nine-one-one software, the police fire software, our new budgeting software, those kind of things.
Okay.
That's the maintenance, annual maintenance on those.
Where did those costs reside before? Within the department? And it's all being moved to you?
Tina will. I can allow. Yeah, I can't believe this is the first time it's come up, actually. So when we changed over to our new financial record keeping system this year, we completely changed our chart of accounts and increased them and increased the number of accounts, made them more specific, not so less specific. So they used to reside in Joe's budget still, but under a line item called other professional services. So all we did was break that up.
Thank you. Other questions for Joe? Joseph, you are eloquent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is financial services. Tina and I had a conversation about eight or ten weeks ago in which we talked about the need to apply some technological advances to the department that would, if implemented and implemented successfully, would allow us to have fewer data entry people and more analytical folks on her team. And so she put together a restructuring of the finance department that does exactly that. And so as you walk out the Spring Street entrance, you will notice that there are four positions on your left. And that number will reduce to three. And so as she's working to implement the recommended organization, there are a number of things that will move the effective date of this to November. But we wanted to include it as part of the recommended budget so that you knew the direction we were headed. Because it's literally underway as we speak. This will allow us, once it's implemented, to make further changes on the second floor of this building so that we'll wind up, when it's all said and done, with essentially a payment center. And so I appreciate that Tina had three hours left in her week to worry about restructuring the department, to go along with a host of other things. So that's really all that first bullet point. It is explained in detail, the structure on the budget document shows how the department's organized reflects that structure. There's an increase of other professional services, it's forty-two thousand dollars. And we would want you to know that. The numbers there are offset by a fourteen thousand dollar decrease in bank account fees. And so those are the highlights of financial services. She's also responsible for utility billing, which we have separate slides on. And I'm going to do the same thing that I did earlier and move to that. This is on pages one thirty-nine to one forty-two. So part of the restructuring is to do one job called utility billing manager and eliminate the other two positions, the finance administrator and administrative supervisor. The technology that's being applied here is munis utility billing software. And that's how we see the customer service reps being able to go from four to three. And then internal services are down. And then internal services are down $21,000 based on the internal allocations. So those are the highlights in utility billing, going with the financial administrative structure. Questions for Tina and myself about finance?
Travis? One question. I had asked Manager Dory quite some time ago last year about the offering of online payments or fees, fines, services. I see that under utility billing, that's going to be launching this next fiscal year.
Yeah.
And then we're going to start with utilities first. Is the system going to be able to accommodate maybe parks fees, courts fines, a bunch of other fees?
So fees and fines already, the courts already have an online point-of-pay system for that. And as far as parks is concerned, they also have an online program when you log onto their website if you want to sign up for one of their events or one of their programs. You can do so online already.
Chris? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just to underscore what Travis's question, I would frankly expect Ron to continue the effort to expand our ability to make it easy for people to send money to the city through technology. So any other questions about finance? So now we're at capital outlay. One of the joys of preparing a budget is there are always things you find that you should have done. And so we're handing out some updated pages for you.
Perfect.
The other, the other thing to tell you, which wasn't part of the highlights yesterday, is that you have, as you know, have a policy of reserves in the general fund of being no more than 50%. And so what we did, because there was expected to be a reserve position greater than 50%, we moved those dollars into capital. And so I wanted you to know that. The capital outlay account is on, items are on page 153 of your budget. And I just want to call to your attention a couple of things. First is the funding for those capital outlay items actually comes from 11 different funds. And then the five biggest ones, a couple of them are important for the council to be aware of. First is that pavement preservation one, that's what we talked about the other day, yesterday. The 487, 562 is how you get to the 4.5 million. It's the last piece. The airport work equipment came out of the airport's TAFER, so we just put it in. I could not explain to you the details of that, but, so I wanted you to know about that. And then the next three are more straightforward. There's five vehicles in police, four Fords and a Dodge, and then some equipment for wastewater, a backhoe, a crane, and some replacement parts, and the pump blowers themselves. And then finally, in water, a hydro vac truck, which, if you don't know what that is, it's a piece of equipment that allows you to clean pipes. And as you can tell, $300,000. The difference between their piece of rolling stock at $300,000 and the sanitation fund is they have a revenue structure that lets them do that, and sanitation doesn't. So those are the big five, if you will. And the first two particularly, I wanted to call to your attention, one because it gets to the whole idea of pavement management, and the second one because you need to know the history of how we got to the number. So that's all I have on capital outlay. Questions from the group? This is, if you look, like I said, page 153, and there'll just be a list.
Are you going to go through pages and pages, or that was it?
That was for capital outlay, that's it. Okay? And so if you have a question about anything on page 153, I'll tell you what. If you want to just take a couple of minutes and go through 153, and then we'll do questions, that works for me, but I've.
I just wanted to explain the handouts that came out of the side you're looking at. You're welcome. So as Manager Bacon stated, as we go through the budget and you look at the recommended budget, there are some changes. And so the documents that you have in front of you that Leslie was kind enough to hand out are the revised pages that are in this, what, 65 pages or so that are in here? And that's all that those are, just the replacement pages as we look at those projects, okay?
I have a question.
Sure.
Maybe Tina could, or you could help walk me through it. Because I was looking also at the fund summaries, and I saw that, I was looking to see the implementation of the, and this was, I think, before you, Manager Bacon, when we made the motion to establish a line item for the 5.5% for capital projects and transfer a remainder of $600,002 million to that fund, and then all of those. So I found the fund on the Capital Projects Fund, that is this.
Nope, it's called I-11 East Kingman Connection Project Fund, and it is in, it is on page...
I didn't.
Page 279.
And so the current, does that include the transfer of those funds?
So when you look in the estimated 18 column, you're going to see the two, up in the revenue section, you're going to see a transfer from the general fund of $548,906, and you're going to see a transfer of, those are swapped, I need to fix that, thank you. It's from the general fund, we transferred $2 million, and from the Capital Projects Fund, we transferred the $548,906, which was the difference of the AECO contract that we talked about. So yes, that's in the fiscal year '18 estimates.
Okay, so what's allocated for 2019 on I-11 includes, these are the allocations for expenditures budgeted on this page?
So that page is all of the funded projects for this year, every funded project. So when we look at that fund summary that you were just looking at on page 279 for the projects, I think Jim's going to get into the projects that are funded this year using the half percent that we're planning to receive in '19, as well as what we received in '18, and then including some of those transfers.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Okay, yeah, so. Just to be clear, and let's kind of back up, the slide that's on the screen right now is about capital outlay, which is different than capital improvement projects. And so that's why I wanted to go through what was in here, so that we're focused on the outlay before we move to the improvement stuff. Okay? But the, as you can tell by these items, the things that get into capital outlay are not very interesting. They're internal type, you know, that's why you've got things like hydro vac trucks and backhoes and police cars and things like that. Capital improvements are about things like parks and streets and interchanges and things like that. So, so that's, we debated about how to do this capital outlay layout, and decided that, excuse me, decided that the best way was to make a page and list them all, so you didn't have to fish through the document, so where's this? So that's how you get to the recommended total of 3.8 million, and that's how, that's, like I said, page 153. And then Tina formatted this so you could identify, if you're looking at page 153, you can tell whether the item's a new item or a replacement item and how much it is. Okay? Okay? So if we're okay on that part, maybe, especially given the question from Vice Mayor Miles, maybe we want to go to the capital improvement piece. And so, as I've shared with you before, most of these projects are funded from reserves. And funded projects between, funded, between '19 and '23 are shown on page 155. I did that for a real clear reason, which is that most people who do capital budgets put them together so that it's really hard to tell which ones of these projects are funded and which ones aren't funded, and which ones are partially funded, and which ones are funded entirely. If we get a 2,000% grant for, you get the pick, right? And so when we did the presentation this year, we were trying to make sure that this document let the reader know which projects were funded. And so that's what page 155 does. It says, if this project is here, there's funding for it. You'll remember from yesterday, I reported that we were able to move the $800,000 for construction sales taxes in the general fund operating budget into the general fund capital budget. Because that was so new, 2019 budget programs that money, but the 2020 through 2023 budgets doesn't program all of it. And so there's discretion, if you will, for programming that money in the out here. And then, and you heard that, you can, three to five projects you pick will get you 40 to 60% of the total. It's just amazing how, you know, a couple of projects in capital improvements change the impression people have. You hear a big number, and you go, wow, there's a lot there. Well, not really, it's a pretty small list. So what we've done is take the funded projects page from 155, and we broke it into like three PowerPoint slides to help facilitate the conversation, so that you don't have to keep looking at the document and look up. But that's all this is, is page 155, and just kind of, we can go down through it. Okay? So that's, that's the list of funded projects. The other part that Vice Mayor Miles mentioned, which maybe Tina would want to walk through again, is the structure of the funds and how that works, particularly the way that pavement management works, and the way that the half for capital improvements works, which, as Tina said, she's labeled as the I-11 project based on previous direction. So Tina, why don't you give a couple of minutes of how that works?
So, so we have a half percent, we have one of the half percents that are being directly deposited into what we're calling the I-11 East Kingman Connection Fund. That was direction from council last October. All of the revenues that we receive from that half percent are being deposited into that fund, as well as any project that is associated with the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project will be spent out of that fund. So when we're looking at any project up there that's titled I-11, those are the monies that are going to be coming out of that I-11 East Kingman Connection Fund. And then we have the half percent for pavement preservation. I think Jim's made it really clear that that's being deposited into a fund, but coming right back out at the end of the year to go into the HERF fund, to cover 100% additional pavement preservation, leaving $25,000 in there as all every year. And then we have the $800,000 in construction sales tax that Jim's talked about. We put that into basically every other type of capital project that we fund that's not dedicated to pavement management or dedicated to the I-11 East Kingman Connection Fund. And so there we have a 2% restaurant, I'm sorry, a 2% hotel tax that gets deposited in there, as well as the $800,000 now in construction sales tax, where all of those other projects get funded. And then we have our flood control fund that has a dedicated revenue source from the county, and all of the projects that are dedicated to flood control are funded from that project fund. And that pretty much surrounds the four project funds that we're going to talk about today, I think.
That helps? Well, yes, that helps very much, but, so as I look at this, and I look across at the Kingman Crossing, I'm assuming that that 2020 and 2021 is funding from a source other than the 3%?
Yep.
And what is that, from the hospital debt?
Hospital contribution.
So that is the hospital contribution, but we incur the liability for it, is that it, over time?
You want to do that either?
Only that one to you.
Thank you. The second question is, no, we don't. We use that as a planning document to show that the project is moving through the years. And that's all we did. I would be open to the suggestion that we change that so that it shows the city's obligation rather than period, rather than the developer's obligation. But that's.
How does that show up in future years when we start paying it back?
As I recall, is it a revenue offset?
It would be a revenue offset, that's how I'd be.
That's how we did, so it's like pass-through money.
Okay.
It's the idea. But I, you know, the reason I said what I just did, and I've looked at this as a document myself, remember, one of the four reasons you do a budget is communication tool, right? Is if you just look at the project, it looks like the city's obligated for the expense side.
Right.
And that's not the intent, because as Tina just confirmed, that there's a revenue offset to it, as quoted developer contribution. The other way to do this is to just talk about the city's financial obligation on this project, which would be significantly less. And then, you see, just, we're going to have the same, we're going to have the same dynamic on Rancho. You have people contributing to Rancho.
Right.
Right? And then the question is, do you show that?
Right.
Or do you just say, in addition, there are? Right? And so you kind of write a narrative to it rather than put numbers.
But notes would be helpful, yeah, probably.
Yeah, okay.
Then the other question, the 12, $1,250,000 for 2019, that's probably...
That's also developer contribution.
That's developer, okay. All right.
Okay. I've got a few questions if I may.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned that there's an I-11 project fund.
Yeah.
So on the, on the 3rd of October of last year, there was a motion that passed six to one to create a capital improvement projects fund, not a specific like interchange fund. And why I think that's important is if we're going to, we voted to combine both of the interchanges into one project, and then the interchanges then become phases within a project. We have draft development agreement that's coming underway for one phase of that, which is Kingman Crossing, and you would take funding out of that capital improvements project fund to contribute to that phase. And that agreement would allow the city to perhaps in the future do other projects off of our capital improvements plan that would be funded from this capital improvement projects fund. So I think it's a little confusing to call it an Interstate 11 project fund, when that's really not what it is. The interchanges in this project... fund, when that's really not what it is. The, the interchanges in this project are included on our CIP, but there are only two projects on a big list.
Okay. I understand, I track what you're saying.
Yeah.
Here's, here's how I understood it, not about the October vote, and I could be dead wrong on this. Wouldn't be the first time today, is that what the council did was, was really two things. The first was to, to affirm that the I-11 project was the project.
Priority.
There was, there was a priority, and it was a priority project, right? And then the second thing is that the name of the fund would be the I-11 project fund until such time as those projects were completed, and then it would revert back to capital improvement fund. If that's not correct, then we can fix that, obviously. But that was my understanding of what the council had in mind when they took the action in October. The, the reason for what it's worth, and I see people going to their memory assisters here, is that the way that it was adopted earlier in the year was exactly what was just suggested, which was a fund for capital projects. So, it's, you're right about the underlying piece as being for capital improvement projects. Tina and I understand that, agree with it, got it. What, what at least I thought was that the October decision was to then within that fund prioritize the I-11 project, and that's how Tina labeled it as the I-11. Want to defend yourself against those charges?
So, I actually thought I got direction from the council to tied up to the I-11 was a priority and then approved the name of it, the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project Fund.
During the October meeting, did go back and it was during regular meeting, I remember it was the next one following one, and specifically by motion that it was not for the I-11.
And not at October, okay.
So.
What do these priority numbers?
That's a, that's the, the current approach to capital budget staff. Remember yesterday, we talked about the difference between horizontal prioritization and vertical? This is, this is, the, the current system is vertical and that's the way the staff calculates the priorities.
One other question. On the Kingman Crossing Boulevard, Southern to I-40 project, in 19, it shows $350,000 coming out of the half cent capital projects tax. I thought under the letter received from KRNC that they were going to design the rest of the design for that project and then contribute $3 million towards the construction toward the south and the city was going to pick up the balance of the construction. So, I don't understand why there's $350,000.
Was.
Allocated in 19.
For the people in the audience who can't hear, that's okay. I can't hear either, so we're even. My, this, this amount of money is finish the design on this, what's the name of the street? Kingman Crossing Boulevard. It's like 90 percent done right now. And so, that's, I assume that was the city caused.
Is that what the letter stated?
Letter, I don't know if it addresses that.
I thought I read that, that the, that the private partner was going to finish the design and then contribute $3 million to the south on the.
Yeah, it's $3 million to the south, I agree with. And definitely that they're doing the design on the, you know, the, the roads on the north side, the interchange itself. And I don't remember if, I can find out, but I don't remember addressing the, there's too many errors.
Sure.
What's the name of the road? What's the name of the road that, that parallels I-40? That's Paper Street right now. Air, huh? No, the other side.
Loureys.
Airfield.
Airfield.
Yeah, from Airfield, south to southern. I just presume that, that the city was going to do that. And so, that's why it's in there.
Could, could we clarify that maybe?
Yeah.
If it's not, if it's silent in the agreement, I think that's going to be a point of negotiation.
Okay.
And I'm not going to commit to that 350 yet, so.
Alrighty. Other question? Oh, I didn't. In, in the, the three slides, we've got, the last one is the page number column. That takes you to the project description if you're interested in that. So, there you go. Other things you want to talk about this, this capital budget? You know, I, I expect that we've probably given Ron enough to do to keep him busy for a couple of weeks over the last few days. And so, when I tell you that I think he will add changing how we do capital budgeting in his town to that list, you shouldn't be surprised because there, there are, there are a series of challenges to the way we do it now. The biggest one is we prioritize vertically rather than horizontally. And so, it's, it's hard, it's hard to come up with a list of the 10 most important projects for the city. The second is, we've got, got a lot of work to do on how we explain funding sources. Right? And then the third is to be able to have much more succinct project descriptions so that people, you know, not you guys, but the, the reader in the community can pick up the document and go, okay, I get it. That's what this is about, so.
One last question.
Yeah.
On the slide that's on.
Yeah.
Screen there, priority number 29, the pavement preservation. We just saw a presentation during council that we needed to stay at a level of maybe four and a half million dollars a year. And when I'm looking at each one of the fiscal years, it looks like it's decreasing. And if you just incorporate inflation, that number, that the half percent should in theory grow over year, year over year. So, what's going on?
So, that four and a half million includes most of what we are accumulating in 18 as well. So, it's another one and a half million on top of three.
Okay.
That's why.
Got it. So, the, so 3.1, and then it's growing year over year.
Yes, it's.
I got it.
Yeah. And then that's compounded out at 275.
Got it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, the capital projects list also includes the fire station, which you heard a presentation on. Last council meeting has the park site acquisition, which we talked about earlier this morning. And that money needs to be committed to acquiring the site this fiscal year. And it's a, it's a really serious unpleasant problem if you don't get that done this year. It's called, the money will not be available in years thereafter.
You know, we've talked about that a couple of times. I remember talking about it before I was on council when I sat through the budget in the back row. And then we talked about last year. This is the first time we've ever heard, I think, you better do it now, or.
I think last year we mentioned that it, it expires January of 2020.
Okay, maybe I missed that. Okay.
Well, I can assure you that the existing senior staff has heard it, that this, we need to deliver on that. And so, they've started to look for sites. I would, here's a, here's a free tickler. You know, if you haven't, if, if you haven't heard back from the staff by the end of this calendar year that they have, they would like to talk to you about sites, then you should be asking Ron when you're going to hear that, because it, it needs to happen right now.
I know. I'll never get it back.
And then, the, the last page is, has water projects on it, some flood control projects. When I did the highlights, we talked about the injection well project, which is in here. There's a project to, out at, I never remember the name you've attached to the, it was Monsoon.
The Green Hall.
The Green, there you go. Thank you. For another project that was identified when Nick Hunt was here. So, the budget addresses, capital budget addresses that subject area in those two ways. And I, those are kinds of things I want you to know about. You, you have questions about individual projects. We've got a group of people here who can help answer those questions. But I just, I don't want to suggest something to Ron that he feels obligated to do. But I, there, when he's looking at improving the capital budgeting process, I'm not even sure it goes in the same budget document as the operating budget. Might wind up being a separate document. It's just, it's just really hard to try to figure out how the capital budget relates to the operating budget and vice versa. And, and I, I've been involved with communities that do the capital budget almost concurrently with the operating budget. So, you end up at the end of June with adopted capital budgets and adopted operating budgets, but you don't go through what this document does, which is to try to put them all together. Any other questions? Kealan would like you to know that they did wastewater projects too in, in this budget. This, you're just, you've heard this for two days now, but I mean, you, you take the, you look at the big number and you go, wow, you know, we've got, we've got all this money going to capital. And you, you back out the big ones, you back out the water ones, you back out the sewer ones, and you haven't got much, you know? And, and so, there are projects, this is why I said the last council meeting, when we were in work session, that having a revenue source for capital is really, really important. It, it wasn't to make sure that wastewater got money for capital or this water fund got money for capital. It was to make sure that Eastern could get rebuilt, you know? It was to, to make sure that we had money to actually put facilities on the park we're going to acquire in this year's budget. And then there's just a litany that I don't have to share with you that, that just says, you know, cities need to have revenue sources for their capital needs as much as they need to have revenues for their operating needs. And, and I think one of the, one of the reasons that cities separate the operating and capital budgets is it drives that point home. Because you, the first thing to look at in a budget, right? Where's the revenue? What are we, how much money are we allocating to, to different things, right? And if you, if you look at that on a, on a consolidated presentation format like we use, it, it's easy to lose the fact that you're talking about two different things. And, and, and then we start doing the thing I just did with one, page 153, and say, here's a, here's a capital outlay item and it's here, but it's really there. And it just, it just clouds the message rather than clarifies. And so, I, Tina and I had this conversation. You know, we're proud of the work that went into this document because we think it's, we think that it's been helpful to communicate things to folks. But we're, we're a long ways from being happy with the document itself. It still needs a lot of work and, and the capital budget needs the most for the reasons that I just suggested. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. And I think on behalf of all of us, I thank you both and all of the staff that worked on this. Because, as I said yesterday, I think this is a much improved document. And I'm glad to hear that there'll be even more improvements. And in my experience out in, with talking with people, you're exactly right. They say, how can you spend money on this when we need this and this and this? And they don't understand the different types of funds that are allocated. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome. I have actually, I have a closing comment.
Close the comment.
This is, this is, this is probably the last budget presentation that I ever do. I said that five years ago. But I think that this council's involvement in the budget process has been essential this year. I, I offered you hope of that when we met. And hopefully, for me, you feel that you have been involved because from my vantage point, you have. I particularly enjoyed this morning on both economic development and park and recreation. And I enjoyed it because the conversation and the discussion is exactly the kind of conversation and discussion that city councils and their city manager ought to engage in. So, I am really heartened by the environment that Ron will become an official part of next Wednesday. And I appreciate very much that you guys took the time to include him in your questions because he will be the person responsible for implementing this document. So, he needed to hear what you thought and what you felt. And, and he did that. And so, with, with the four to six amendments in mind, which I suggested would happen with a recommended budget, we believe that this amended recommended budget meets the council's priorities. And on behalf of Tina and Leslie and myself and indirectly for Ron, we hope you agree with that. And I have enjoyed immensely the opportunity to put this document together and to share what I thought with what you thought and try to find the, an alignment that, that works for everybody. So, we have gone from being a little behind to 12 minutes ahead. And I hear no objection from Mr. Wade that we're, we're on schedule now. And so, the, the last footnote that I've done with the budget part, this is just a, we've got to loop this in. And I, I think it probably could wait until the downtown thing on the 19th of June, but it doesn't have to. It's up to Ron, is, I really believe that this council today made some good decisions about what it wants to do in downtown. And those need to be reduced to a resolution that says, this is what we're about, so that there is an official city policy on what we're doing, rather than having to remember that we had an application in 1986 or a letter in 1991, or you fill in the blank. A lot of the, a lot of the disconnect, in my view, about the city and downtown comes from the lack of a specifically adopted, this is what we're doing right now and we expect staff to go out and, and get these things done. And I think this morning's conversation allows us to be perfectly positioned to do that. And so, that's just a, a thought at the end of, of this budget process about an action item for, for your June council meetings. And with that, have a great rest of the day. And with that, have a great rest of the day, and I will turn the meeting back over to you, Vice Mayor Miles, and I bet you there's a motion to adjourn that somebody's going to make here pretty soon.
Yes. Again, great appreciation to you and the staff, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.